Ince City Council, Tuesday, June 24th, 2025, special meeting is called to order. Roll call?
Mayor Nolan.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Chisholm.
Present.
Councilwoman Rutledge.
Present.
Councilman Bishop.
Present.
Councilwoman Scott.
Present.
Councilwoman Howard.
Here.
Councilwoman Richardson. Mayor, you have a call.
All right. Public hearing. Proposed city of Ince budget for fiscal year 2025, 2026. How we gonna answer a public hearing then? Let's think about what we doing right now. We gotta have a public hearing before we pass the budget, no matter what. So, the public hearing is happening tonight. But how somebody gonna comment on it if they haven't seen it? All right, proposed city of Ince budget fiscal year 2025, 2026 budget, July 1st, 2025, through June 30th, 2026. The property tax rate proposed to be levied to support the proposed budget will be subject, will be a subject at this hearing. A copy of the proposed budget shall be on file and available for the public inspection during office hours at the office of the city clerk. We have a motion to open the public hearing?
Support.
We probably move in support of any discussion. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Public hearing is now open. Carrie, you got any comments? Luckily, no one showed up to destroy us.
You're gonna hear it all the next time.
Oh, we gonna hear it. Don't you worry. Do we have a motion to close the book again?
We not gonna go get them?
Good.
Oh, yeah. Jason, go get them. Maybe he wants to say something.
Can I say something off the record? I know we going. Are we going?
Yeah.
Are we what?
Yes.
Yeah, we will.
Kim Slade. She's a dentist.
Willie. That's good for her.
She lives out that way?
I got the grand opening thing, yeah.
That's cool. Kim Slade, look at her. What went on up?
Smart young lady.
It's coming.
Yeah, I was gonna say it wasn't there, but I think it was a good time to be playing.
Since we in the public hearing, I wanna apologize to the city council and the public, I guess, for not getting this budget to you on a timely fashion. Obviously, the deadline is June 1st, so this really should've happened last month at the latest. That would not happen again. Next year, my goal is to get this passed by April, so we're going to move everything up. I'm not gonna depend on other folks to do it, I'm just gonna do it myself, because this makes no sense. This embarrassing, I mean, really. But that's on me, because the budget comes from the mayor. So, I'm supposed to give it to you, you supposed to have time to review it, ask questions, modify it. Scream at you about it. That means... We used to have four, five study sessions. I mean...
Oh, yeah, we did used to have...
We went through every line.
Every line item, yeah.
Now, this year's budget will be very similar to last year's, because we're still in the deficit elimination plan. So, we really can't deviate too far from it. So, there's some small adjustments based on people we gave raises to. But the rest of it's gonna be pretty much what we approved last year. It still sounds acceptable. Hey. You on vacation, you can't stay away. I don't know if you noticed, but we lost power today. City Hall, generator came on, it only powered a small portion of City Hall. So, it sent everybody home early, put a note on the door. Power came back on about 3:30.
Was that from whatever they doing on Ince Road? When I came through there, I saw poles snapped and everything.
Somebody hit a...
Wow. Yeah, that's exactly...
The two legs went down, affected us, City Hall, DVS.
Okay.
Certain portion of the city didn't have power.
Remember when they had that accident on Colorado in Ince? And they hit their pole? We lost power too. We lost power too.
Yeah.
And of course, because we're Ince, a generator clicks on, it's running, but it's not powering the building. You have to call the generator, but it's not powering the building. It's running. One officer in Treasury was able to, she was functioning. Lights were on in Treasury.
With no computers.
Computers.
And no phones.
No phones.
And the only thing that was on was ours, was our light. We couldn't let our gate up, computers down, and phones.
We spent a lot of money for the generator. Come to find out, we did not attach all the panels in this building to the generator.
Oh, wow.
Only us. You trying to tell me whoever worked on that didn't make sure all the panels for the building was attached to the generator? Had we spent all that money on the generator?
That's what's out there.
I shall not tell a lie.
Well, maybe not that brand, but that's the type of setup.
So, we gotta get that taken care of. You talk to the electricians?
You see, I'm looking over at Jerome like, that's your department, ain't it? That's what I'm saying. You are the key to the city.
Jerome's in his t-shirt and shorts. He had to hang out.
Statue made of your drawing. You always gotta be here, right?
People might throw stuff at it.
They might.
Let them tell him, he don't do nothing.
Miracle always get vandalized. Why don't we close this up? He can speak to us when we call it. Close the public hearing. Victoria, you got any comments on the budget? You wanna raise?
All right, close it. Please close it.
Any second? All right, we probably move to second in discussion. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, ordinance, so we have no first reading? We have a second reading. You wanna read that?
amend the City of Ince Code of Ordinance, Section 52.00, 52.01, 52.10, and 52.11 pertaining to water standards of operations, service, to hold second public reading of the proposed amended ordinance.
Almost.
I'm at you.
Oh, my bad.
That was just the second reading.
Thank you.
New business.
Consider approval to amend the City of Ince Code of Ordinance, Section 52.00, 52.01, 52.10, 52.11 pertaining to water standards of operations, service, to hold second public reading of the proposed amended ordinance, June 24th, 2025.
Support.
Probably move in support of any discussion. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. We're gonna just take a brief adjournment until the treasurer comes back.
Discussion, instead of taking action at this time, about the fiscal year 2025, 2026 budget.
Second. We probably move to second in discussion. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes. Mr. Treasurer?
Good evening, council, mayor. We are here this evening to go over the fiscal year '26 budget, and also to take a look at the current fiscal year FY '25 in comparison. As you know, the fiscal year starts July 1 of each year, so we're kinda at the end of the fiscal year, but we wanted to go in depth with the recommended budget for FY ' '26. What you have in front of you right now is the general fund, printing up the other funds, but wanted to kinda walk through this line by line in terms of the columns that we have here. Just to give you an overview, again, this is the general fund, Fund 101, and you have a number of columns. I think the most important column is gonna be on the far right. That is what's being recommended from the administration, what we refer to as the mayor's recommended budget. That's gonna be on your far left, on your far right column. And just kinda starting out, I wanted to kinda provide an overview of the budget and the current environment, if you will. As you know, the city is emerging from fiscal deficit, a budget deficit, so we've really been trying to kinda maintain our, you know, our budget throughout the fiscal year. I think there are a couple of important things, you know, as we have discussed on a few occasions, there's two ways of trying to improve the budget. One is maintaining or decreasing expenses, the other is trying to expand on our revenues. And I wanted to touch on what are some of the important trends that we're seeing when it comes to the overall city's budget picture. First, I would look at our property taxes. We have seen a sizable increase in the taxable value of the city's property tax base, something in the neighborhood of 11%, which is a pretty, you know, important amount of growth that the city is experiencing. You may have heard, a few weeks back, where we talked about kinda the increase in the assessed value, which was closer to 22%. But as you know, the way property taxes work, that doesn't always translate to a taxable value because of the law caps how much can be increased. So, while we saw a 22% increase in the assessed value, the actual increase in the taxable value was not that high, but it was still a very strong 11%, which led to us projecting out, and we tried to be really conservative with our projections, led us to making a projection increase of a little less than $300,000 in property tax receipts. The other big factor that I wanted to point out is the state revenue sharing that we get. And some time ago, we, you know, the mayor announced that we had seen an improvement in the formula for the city's standpoint that was gonna generate over $1.5 million in revenue. We've been able to see the results of that for this current fiscal year, and so we've gone from about 4.7 million, that, 4.7 million for the last fiscal year, to about 6.2 million that we're expecting for this year. And then, when we look at next year, we're looking at about 6.3 million. So, that's over $1.6 million in increase each year collectively. So, we're between the two years, this year and next year, we're seeing about three, over $3 million that we are getting in revenue that's pretty much free and clear, with no strings attached to it, just by getting a better share of the revenue sharing. So, those two things are really the things that have kinda given us a little bit of cushion as we try and make our way back from some of the challenges that we had over the last couple fiscal years. You know, and it's really allowed us to avoid some really significant cuts, has put us in a position where we could kinda stabilize ourselves, make sure we've got the proper resources that are being deployed, and making sure that we're staffed adequately in order to deliver the services that we're trying to give to the citizens. The other thing I wanted to point out was that, I know this time last year, we were putting a big emphasis on our grant, our grants, you know, not only seeking grants, but trying to get caught up on the reimbursement. We had incurred a lot of expenses that had not been reimbursed. So, over this current fiscal year, we've been, you know, doing a really excellent job of collecting on some of those grants that were owed to the city from prior expenses, as well as trying to keep up with where we are on an ongoing basis. So, you know, that's really been a benefit, a big benefit, because when we look at it, some of the numbers from prior years can be a little bit off, because we have those expenses without having the grants in that particular period to kinda offset it. So, we might have expenses in FY '23, but we don't see the revenue until FY '24, FY ' '25 in some instances. So, as you guys know, Scharde and now Elise are working hard on that, and that's another big factor that's allowed us to, allowed us to, again, really maintain our fiscal house and not have the draconian cuss that we may have otherwise had to have faced. So, wanted to kinda give you that, that broad oversight with the general fund. You know, another important thing as we walk through this, all of our labor agreements were designed to end at the end of fiscal year '26, so we have one more year on our major labor agreements with the police officers, firefighters, as well as our ASME workers. That was by design to give us time to really assess our financial situation, and we think over the next, you know, six months or so, we'll have a better sense of exactly where we are as we get our audits completed and start having some negotiations with those individual labor unions for those agreements. So, you know, before we get into the details, are there any questions on anything I may have said?
Okay, when you said grants, is this the state grant you was talking about?
So, yes, we have both state and federal grants. One of our major grants that we've been collecting on was the cops grant through the police department. We also had a number of other grants from the state, the FDCVT grants, which are issued by the state. And so, you know, as I mentioned earlier, a lot of times, those are reimbursable grants. You spend the money, then you get reimbursed for it. Because we have fallen behind, those expenses were on the books, but we hadn't gotten the revenue.
Okay, because I noticed what bequested and recommended was zero, so...
Yeah, so we're still trying to work out, because some of it is gonna be a situation where some of those monies are gonna be applied against FY '24, some's gonna be applied against FY '25, and that's one of the things, I think, as we look over the, you know, FY ' '23, '24, and '25, it'll be over that three-year period where everything's gonna kinda get shaken out. Because of the amount of grants that we have, we do a single audit, which is specifically focused on grants, and they're very, you know, particular in terms of, despite when we may get the money, how they apply it, so...
So, I think it's, I mean, in this line item, I think that was a good thing not to even question anything, because if we don't get it, that's gonna offset the budget. So, if we do get it, it'll just be...
And if we get it, it could very well apply against the prior fiscal year.
Yes, okay. Thank you. What's the state rec marijuana excise tax?
That is the money that we get from the state tied to the revenue that the state generates from the taxes on marijuana sales. So, that's money that comes back from the state for that.
It's 10%. 10% of all sales.
And I got a couple of the questions. This investment income? I see there will, I see something in here for '24 and '25. What is that? What's in that line item?
So, that's essentially for any investment funds that the city has. We have some investment accounts. So, you know, we keep some of our excess cash in those investment accounts, and then we, you know, derive income, interest, and everything off of that. We have to split it amongst the funds. That can get a little bit tricky depending upon how the final accounting is done, because we, as we go through and, you know, apply specific numbers, we have to split all of the investment income between the various funds. So, it's somewhat of a guess, depending upon how much cash a particular fund is going through. But it's basically for the investment accounts that the city has. Returns on the investment account.
All right, and then the rental revenue? So, there's nothing in that line item for '24, '25?
So, we, you know, again, I was trying to be, you know, very conservative. I know we have the DT, is it the DTE?
Yeah, Ince Road, Ince Drive.
And is that general fund money?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I would say it's discretionary. It's discretionary.
But historically, we've...
I mean, that's what the mayor puts it, we got, we get $90,000 a year.
Yeah, yeah.
For the Ince High School.
Yeah.
Oh, consumers.
Consumers, yeah.
Did you put that in the general fund?
I didn't have it in general fund currently, but we can, we can, we'll update that. And we're just trying not, we don't wanna overinflate anything that we're not 100% certain on.
And thank you for getting this in bigger font.
Sure.
I think that's three years, like...
Yep, it is. So, it's probably four.
Okay, okay. Any other questions before I start going on line by line? Okay, so, starting at the top, this is our revenue category, and I'll kinda walk through each line. Please stop me if you have any questions about anything, you know, if you need an explanation, or if you have a question about the amount. The first item is our property taxes. I mentioned, we are projecting an increase in property taxes. Again, it's tied to that improvement in the taxable value, which is derived from the assessed value. So, we're, you know, making a, it's about a $250,000 projected increase in the property taxes. Could be more, but one of the things, again, we're trying to do is, we're just trying to be pretty conservative in, when it comes to our revenue projections here. The next couple of things are some of the, you know, the general property tax thing, some of the capture items, as well as the delinquents. These things tend to vary just depending upon property taxes and who pays, who doesn't pay, and how things kinda shake out with the county on a year-to-year basis. The next items we have are payment in lieu of taxes and pilot contractual. Those things are pretty similar. We've kinda split them historically. We have some properties that enter into an agreement with the city. Instead of being charged property taxes, they pay what we refer to as a pilot, which is a payment in lieu of taxes. So, there's several properties that we have those agreements with, and we, they're kinda quasi-property taxes, but they are revenue to the city outside of the actual traditional property taxes. So, that's what's there on the pilot contractual. PA 359, it's a annual small levy that's done for advertising. It's $50,000. We're kinda capped at $50,000, so we generally adjust the mileage for that based upon whatever it would take to generate $50,000. But it's just a item that can be used by the city for, again, for advertising or promotion. We talked a little bit about the state recreation, recreational marijuana excise tax. You know, we're right around about $400,000 in what we're projecting on that. That number, you know, is obviously can fluctuate based on sales, and there's some, you know, information kinda indicating sales may go one way or the other, but we're kinda sticking with a similar projection from this current year. We're projected about, from the state, about 407,000, so we kept, kinda kept that similar amount, and didn't have much of an increase projected with that. The next couple of items are our penalties and interest and collection fees. Those are things that we collect on from property taxes. So, there is a administrative fee that we collect, as well as whenever there's late payments that are made on property taxes, penalties and interest will attach to that. So, that's where the revenue from those two sources are being generated. We talked a little bit about the federal cops grant. Much of that is, we've got about $950,000 in this current fiscal year's budget. Some of that may be spread to next fiscal year, but I didn't wanna get into a situation where we were double counting. So, by leaving it in this current fiscal year, we think for the most part, you know, we're capturing much of what we expect to collect off of that grant. So, that's why we have that in FY '25 and not spread out on any other years. But again, depending upon the timing and how it all shakes out, the way that that cops grant works, we can only apply it against certain salaries on certain offices. We don't collect off of all of the offices, we only collect off certain ones, so it can be a very time-sensitive thing in terms of how those monies are applied and everything. Then we've got the revenue sharing from the state. I mentioned, you know, we saw a significant increase in that. You know, again, that's a big source of revenue for the city, as well as the increase providing a very valuable buffer for the city's overall budget. Just so everyone's clear, that's, that number's tied specifically to the state sales tax. So, as retail sales go up or down, those numbers can change. This amount they were projecting for next fiscal year is based on the latest estimate from the state. They update them every two to three months. So, this is the latest. If sales go up or go down, that number can change one way or the other, but that number is directly tied to the revenue sharing. Just kinda going down, we then get into our interest and investment income, interest earned and investment income. That's gonna, again, be tied to kinda the excess cash that the city has in both the main bank account, as well as our investment accounts. We kinda consider investment income to be money that's coming directly from those investment accounts. Interest earned is gonna be things that are in more short-term, our money market accounts or something like that. But again, there's, they're basically revenue that's coming from money from the excess cash that the city has invested with, in various investment vehicles and everything. Then the next thing is, we have the administrative fee that we charge to all of the respective funds. This administrative fee is designed specifically so we can recoup costs that the general fund bears. So, you know, there are a lot of costs that are centralized in the general fund, things such as attorney fees, insurance, you know, time that administrative officials spend working on various funds, and we basically levy a management fee, administrative fee to those funds, and we charge those funds for those particular, those particular costs. It's not a dollar for dollar, we generally will take some type of estimate and utilize that for purposes of this charge, but again, it's to, you know, to recoup all of the costs that a lot of times are placed within the general fund and everything. Any questions there? Good, so I'll keep moving, turning the page there.
Why's the rental revenue zero?
That was the one, mayor, I was saying, I wasn't quite clear on if that was properly in the general fund, so I just left that number zero. I'm gonna, when we get to the approved budget, I'll make sure we have that included in there.
So, it's either general or building, right?
General would be... It's the...
You talking about the rental income we get from people renting their properties?
No, 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 from consumers.
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh, that's what you mean by...
Yes.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, that's general, that's 90.
So, turning the page, we have the, again, the administrative fee that we talked about. Then we have a couple smaller items. One is the retiree healthcare reimbursement. That is essentially a pass-through. We do offer for any retirees who want to utilize a dental or a vision... We do offer for any retirees who want to, uh, utilize a dental or a, um, uh, vision. We ha, we carry a coverage that they can, um, utilize. But we pass along the cost of that program for, for them. And we take that money, that money is, is then withheld from their pension checks. And so we just book that as revenue, but it's essentially an offset for, um, the coverages that we incur on the expense side. And then we, we're booking it on the revenue side just to show, because that money comes in on a monthly basis from those, from those pension checks. But it's, um, it's for any retirees who choose to, uh, select those programs. We, we basically just carry those for, um, when the city chose to end retiree healthcare, we did continue coverages that retirees could pay for. So, um, that's what those, um, those particular funds are for. Moving down to the district court, um, the first thing is we get some revenue from the state. They cover, uh, part of the judge's salary. So that's what that, that amount is, is shown there. That's a pretty regular annual thing. Next, we have the fines and forfeitures for the court. And you see that there's a pretty sizable uptick. The court has been booking, uh, a significant higher number of, um, fines and forfeitures. They, um, you know, they, I think they feel pretty confident that they're going to reach that million-dollar mark this year, um, and that they expect to be, uh, doing more than that next year. You know, so again, we, you know, we're trying to be conservative, but they feel pretty confident about these. I did have a conversation with the court about, about this, and we've seen the increased activity. And so, you know, the, um, the revenue that is projected from that is being reflected here. But it is, it is a sizable increase. But it is, um, you know, a reflection of what they've been doing throughout this current fiscal year and what they expect to do, um, going into next fiscal year. They expect to continue at that pace, and, um, they even expect some increase to go. So, um, you know, that revenue is a, um, you know, sizable, you know, it's a pretty significant increase. But it is, um, you know, it is a pretty accurate estimate based on, um, the amounts that they've incurred, um, the amounts that they've levied this year so far. Next, we have our franchise fees. And that's the money that the city gets from, um, cable franchise fees, uh, from both Comcast and AT&T. Those monies have started to show some deterioration throughout the years. You know, as more people kind of move away from cable, go to streaming, go to, you know, some people don't, don't look at cable, uh, cable at all. So those, those revenues, there's not a lot that we can do. We're kind of just collecting those checks. But there has been kind of a, um, consistent decline. So we're just trying to, you know, be, be somewhat, um, you know, reasonable and, and understanding of how that, that, uh, revenue may continue to decline as we move forward. So we, we're showing a, a small decline, um, in that particular area.
I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
When it comes to those, I know, um, I guess all that was negotiated because, you know, you get franchise fees or you get infrastructure, uh, put into the city based off of those particular entities being there, just like, well, wow, if they had lines here too. What happens when that hits a, a certain minimum? Or if it's just exhausted altogether and we don't receive those franchise fees anymore? What, is there any, um, alternative in play with those cable companies at all?
Um, I, I don't know the answer to that, uh, Mayor Pro Tim, um, you know...
I don't think it was anything they foresaw either. That's why I was wondering.
Yeah, you know, I mean, because it's, it's a contractual amount and it's a percentage that's actually, as you know, it's, it's put on, on each customer's bill.
Right.
If that, you know, if that were to go away, I'm not exactly sure, um, what the, what the alternative would be.
Well, they tried to eliminate it last year, the state legislature, but it failed.
Yeah.
They, they said they shouldn't be able to have to pay it because they, they can't compete with the streaming services who don't have to pay, who don't have to pay.
I mean, th, these things were put in place a long time ago before people could even envision, you know, streaming, but wasn't even, I don't even think the internet was around when these franchise fees were, um, put in place and everything.
Okay, thank you.
Then next, we have, uh, a number of fees, uh, reg, business registration, vendor licenses, a number of fees that we, uh, um, just putting, uh, some type of, um, projection on those. You know, again, we're trying to be, uh, somewhat, um, consistent with what we, um, what we, what we're, the approach that we're taking and not overestimating any revenues. We don't want to, um, put ourselves in a position where revenues are being overestimated just due to aggressive projections and everything. Then I'm moving on to the next page. I think the next item is looking at, uh, revenues from the police department. We have, as you guys are probably aware, we have a contract where we assign an officer to the, uh, Ingsdale Housing Department. That contract is, is been extended, uh, for another year, um, at a rate of ninety thousand dollars for that, uh, for that officer. We basically, um, get reimbursed for up to ninety thousand for the cost of that, uh, that particular officer. Then we have a number of different, uh, fees that are, are, um, or revenues that are generated from the, um, from the police department. And, um, you know, we, again, we're, we're using some, some projections here. And you can see the, you know, on the far-right column, you can see the, the various estimates that we, uh, have put in place for, um, for each of these particular, uh, revenue, uh, line items and everything.
Mayor, I just had a question, so, and I could be, you know, asking the wrong question, but are the actuals supposed to be on here too? What we actually, where we are?
That, that's the proj, that's basically the projected. Yes, I'm sorry, yep, that's the projected, yep. That's pretty much through, um, through June with a little bit of a, yep, that's, that's projected. Sorry, I didn't, I didn't, uh, didn't point that out. Next item is, uh, the fire department revenues. This is one area where we do have some, some risk, I would say, um, particularly when it comes to ambulance revenue, which is, you know, historically a significant revenue stream. You know, if you look at what's going on with, at the federal level, there's discussions about cuts in Medicaid. And, you know, there is a risk that some of that could funnel down to the city. If there are Medicaid cuts that are pushed from the federal level down to the state or changes in how we get reimbursed, um, how, how all that is going to shake out, you know, is to be determined. We don't really know how that's going to impact us, um, particularly when we look at the, uh, look at the ambulance revenue. But that is one risk that we did want to point out, um, and that we're certainly tracking in, based upon any, the further developments. We, we, you know, we may need to revisit that particular, uh, particular item.
I have a quick question. It's back in police, but are you, so you're just not for, like, grants? You're usually just, you're just going to put zero just because we don't really know?
Well, I'm sorry, what was your question?
Like the JAG, like the JAG grant?
So, so...
Do we not get that?
So, um, that particular grant, there's one that I believe has been exhausted and we, we're, um, applying for...
So we exhausted, uh, twenty-one and twenty-two. Um, we still have twenty-three, twenty-four.
Okay.
That makes sense, okay.
It's three years, right?
Okay.
But again, if we...
We still have funds for those.
Yeah.
And I believe we just got twen, we'll have twenty-five. I, I believe they just have to get you to sign for that one.
Oh, so that's like a year behind, pretty much, is why it's zero.
We're, we're kind of getting reimbursed for monies that could very well go against FY twenty-four and even FY twenty-five.
I was just asking, thank you.
So, so that was the main thing I wanted to point out on the, um, fire department. The, um, you know, again, the, the issue of the Medicaid, um, you know, that, that's one important thing that we're tracking because that's a big, um, you know, a pretty, pretty significant risk factor that we're facing there. The next item is the building department. You know, I think we've been, been tracking pretty well. Some of the actual revenues are lower in some categories and higher in others. But the, you know, the bottom line, I think we're right, right where we had, uh, you know, pretty much right where we were projecting out. You can see building permits were a little bit higher. You know, one-hundred-and-forty-one thousand is projected for this fiscal year. We have had projected and budgeted for one-hundred-and-fifteen thousand. So we're over on that category. But you can see on electrical permits and mechanical permits, we're a little bit, uh, below where we were projecting. So, you know, some of these categories, when we look at the individual line items, some were higher on, some were lower. But, um, the collective total, we're pretty much in line, maybe a little bit higher, um, than what we had, had initially projected for this current fiscal year. And we're taking pretty similar numbers for, um, for next year's projections. Okay, flipping the page, um, see some more of the building department revenues. As I said, if you look at kind of the bottom line total, you'll see that, um, you know, for twenty-four, twenty-five, we had budgeted about four-hundred-and-fifty-seven. We're projecting about four-hundred-and-seventy-four. You know, at, we had budgeted four-fifty-seven, projecting four-seventy-four for the current fiscal year. And then we're, uh, projecting out for next fiscal year about four-hundred-and-eighty-five. So a little bit of, of an increase, but not much. But I think, you know, again, the, you know, these department, um, revenues are pretty healthy. We, you know, we're seeing some, uh, uptick overall continuing when we come to building, you know, permits and certificates and the like, uh, in that particular department.
Mr. Mayor, so there's only a thousand dollars for demolition?
Yeah, so that, yeah. Yeah, we, we don't really spend money on demolition. When we demo, we usually get the money from the county.
And that's, that's revenue. That's on the, that's basically like a demolition permit.
So that is, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm, I'm sorry.
Yep.
This is revenue, so we only getting a thousand dollars from the county?
Oh, he's just, he's, he's, if someone came in after demo, they probably have to pay a permit fee. So he's guessing, we don't get a lot of demo.
Yeah, I think we had less than, we got about six-hundred-and-seventy that we had collected for this fiscal year. So just hasn't seen a lot of, um, you know, just based on the, the numbers there. Hadn't seen a lot of, uh...
So, okay.
Because I think a lot of the demos are probably done by, through the city, if anything, right?
A lot of times they lose the house and it comes back to us or the county, and they'll have to demo it.
Next, we have some planning department fees, um, site plan applications, just different, um, uh, fees within, uh, tied to the planning department. You know, the one thing, site plan applications, uh, I think we have been projecting a little bit higher amount. Didn't see a lot of revenue in that cata, particular category. So we tried to kind of ramp that down, you know, depending upon final numbers. Sometimes things might get put into the wrong category. But, um, you know, we're seeing numbers kind of below what we were projecting on that, uh, particular, particular line item. Then, um, moving down to economic development, we've got, um, sale of land, and that's just vacant lots, different property that the city may sell. And then the second line item is the first right of refusal. That's the annual tax sale through the county. And that's, you know, a kind of a to-be-determined amount. You know, just put six-hundred-thousand dollars in there, it's kind of a, uh, projection. You know, we, we never really know what, um, you know, what those numbers are going to be until we actually get it from the, uh, get the information from the county. It's really hard for us to, to, uh, project those, uh, project those amounts out. All right, and so that's pretty much the, um, revenue side. As you can see, you know, we, we've got, uh, you know, around seventeen to eighteen million dollars in revenues. You know, some of that can vary based upon the, um, grants, you know, because we booked those, those into the revenue side. But, you know, the bottom line is we, you know, we feel that this is a pretty reasonable estimate just based off of the information. We try not to, again, um, be too rosy or overly optimistic with, with our projections. And so that if we ha, if we have to adjust, the hope is that we're going to have to adjust on the upside and not on the downside. All right, um, we can, uh, keep moving on, um, moving on to the next page. And now we're getting into the, uh, to the expenses and, uh, the appropriations. Um, starting with department one oh one, city council. You know, we, we've got the salaries, um, you know, as, as set by the compensation commission. We've got that, uh, line item there. And then we, um, budgeted for several items, special events, uh, conferences and workshops, printing and advertising, um, along with subscriptions and memberships. And so that, you know, that's, I think that's pretty straightforward. Obviously, that's you all's budget. You know, we did try to, you know, kind of capture some expectation of, of what you may, may be doing over the next, uh, twelve months. But again, that's, that's your budget. And, and obviously, any input or, um, revisions that you think are, are in line there, we certainly want to, uh, be open to that.
Excuse me one second. So it's a subscription membership?
Mm-hmm.
Do we still get books from, uh, magazines from MML? Are we still in there, do you know?
I don't know.
I get information from there, I get them from my email.
They send a book here, do they send it to?
I haven't seen the books.
So we may or may not be with them, because we used to get books every month from MML.
Yeah, we pay our membership dues.
Yeah, so we need to probably call them and find out why we haven't gotten them. They usually send us a book once a month, MML, and they, they had a lot of good information.
It's a nice little uptake, too. It's a nice little uptake as well, nineteen thirty.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yep, and, and, and so just on that point, subscriptions and memberships, it is things such as MML, uh, National League of Cities, different memberships that the, uh, city has, um, are reflected in that, in that particular category. Any questions or comments on the, um, council budget there?
Special events. What was special events?
A lot of times that could be something like the state of the city, um, you know, any, any particular events, like the parade or something, something to that effect, any kind, generally any kind of citywide event, will usually reflect that in the, um, in that particular category. I'm sorry?
Nothing.
Oh. Okay, uh, I will keep moving on. Next, we have the district court. And I did want to point out there are a couple of things, um, that they requested and that we changed here. Previously, we would have their budget split between the court, um, department one-three-six, and then on the next page, department one-three-seven, under community services. They essentially asked that all of that just be moved up to the court. I think for years, we had been kind of carrying this split. Don't know if it really made sense. I think it probably started years ago, and we've just kind of continued it on. But for purpose of this, they moved, uh, an employee or part-time employees up into the, um, to department one-three-six. So if you look at, uh, the, under department one-three-six, the salaries permanent, you see it's, is going up from up to six-hundred-and-sixty thousand, um...
Is that the recommended?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, you know what?
Because that recommended column is all...
Yeah, so the request, and I'm sorry, that, this, uh, this did not get carried over correctly. I apologize. So that, that, that request is from the court. I generally just kind of leave that, uh, untouched for, you know, unless there's something that's, um, particularly, um, you know, sticking out. But, um, yeah, so they, they've requested, these are the, these are the numbers that came directly from the court and, uh, what we would be including in the recommended. As I mentioned, the salaries did increase. And then another thing is, as we move down, the judge has plans to add a magistrate over at the court. And so that's the other major change. So we moved up, got rid of some of the expenses in the community service under Department one three seven, and then we added a magistrate. And you'll see that kind of in the middle there at twenty thousand. And generally, the thought is, you know, the court is kind of backlog with, in terms of being able to process a lot of things, and I think the magistrate, the judge's expectation is that they'll be able to take some of the caseload off of her and be able to get things processed in a more timely fashion. So that's really the rationale behind, behind that request. You know, I think everything else is pretty straightforward, we.
Darren?
Yes.
Before you go any further, the equipment maintenance, they increased it to twelve five? For equipment maintenance?
Yes. Yep. It was at, it was at twelve five.
It was at twelve five?
Yeah, if you look at what was from, when I say it was at twelve five.
It was approved?
Approved from twenty-five, yes.
I saw the recommendation is zero. He didn't move it over.
So, so, so I generally don't touch the court's budget unless, I should, I should have copied everything over into recommended. Unless there's something that's, again, pretty a wild request, which I haven't seen come from the court, I generally just kind of float that over, but I just hadn't, hadn't been looking at their, their budget in context of here. And, you know, I think for the most part, the one thing that they do want to also take a look at is their, is their building. That's one of the things that, you know, as we kind of go through this process and get into next fiscal year, we're going to be taking a look at some of the capital needs for the city buildings, the, you know, not just the Justice Center, but some of the other city buildings. But they, they do want to take a look at some of the things that they're, that they're in need of. One of, one of the plans that we have is just to try and get an overall assessment. Some of the things won't be able to be addressed within the next fiscal year, but that, that's one thing that they do want to have us take a look at is their, the current building and some of the things that they may need over there at the District Court.
So that explains like the jumps that I'm seeing. Because they're like projecting, like we want to get, we want to maintenance more equipment because we need it, so instead of five, we're going to do twelve.
In some, in some instances, they're looking to replace things as well.
Got it, okay, thank you.
So, you know, if there's any questions on, on here, you know, again, I did want to point out the magistrate. You know, the, you know, other things that I think are pretty in line with where they were last year. They have requested an increase in office supplies. You know, but again, I think that's kind of tied to some of their, what they feel is some, some of the operational needs and just trying to make some improvements in that, in that instance. Turning the page, there is one, one line item, there's the contributions for the MIDC grant. The MIDC grant is essentially, it's like the indigent defense council's, what generally referred to as public, what is it?
Public defender.
Public defender, thank you. And so the, the city makes a, they have, for several years have had a grant to pay for attorneys for people who can't afford it. And so the city has to make a contribution towards that grant that's matched, generally, probably in about twenty percent of the money for the grant, for the overall expenses to pay their attorneys comes from this matching component. You know, we don't match a dollar for dollar, we only match a fraction of it. But there is some activity going on, they, you know, the MIDC is, again, it's a state-level entity. They've been rejecting a lot of plans, I think like ninety plans have been rejected, one of which is Inkster. But I don't know if you saw the email last week, Mayor. And so again, there's about ninety communities, Wayne County, Dearborn, that have had their, their plans for, and it goes off of an October one fiscal year. So for the next few months, we're okay, but they're, you know, kind of in limbo as to what may or may not happen next year. The court thinks it's going to get worked out, but nothing has been approved for, for, for next year. But based upon what the court submitted for the grant, that's the amount that would reflect the matching grant. If, if the grant didn't come through, I'm not, you know, not exactly sure what, what the next steps would be with that. So we've got the, you know, I mentioned the one thirty-seven where we have moved most of those costs up into the, up into the court. Oh, thank you. And so that's why those numbers are zero, they didn't request anything and nothing's, nothing's being recommended with that.
So, Darren? As far as fuel? They projected twelve thousand, I mean, that's what they used, they didn't put anything in there for that?
So, you know, we're, we're kind of going through the year-end process. And one of the things is, you know, we're moving money, because, because, you know, over the last fiscal year and even into this fiscal year, things have been getting applied to the wrong general ledger account. And so, you know, I'm not sure if that, you know, right now, that's where it is. I couldn't figure out where that may or may not go, exactly how that's, how that was generated. And so they, you know, they didn't, they didn't request anything for that.
It's funny, they didn't request, but we know they're going to use fuel.
Well. I would not expect they would have, would have used twelve thousand, twelve thousand dollars worth of fuel. I think that could have been, from an accounting standpoint, it got booked to the wrong account.
Okay, okay, okay.
Darren, can you do me a huge favor, when you get a chance, and email that to me? Because I'm trying to like have side-by-sides of like the projected revenue?
For sure, yeah.
And the expenses? And because of the way the pages are set up, like.
Yeah, I can, I can certainly do that.
I'm just tracking one way at this point.
To your city, your Inkster email?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I can do that.
And you can finish, I just, before we like vote on it, I want to make sure.
Okay, so next department is Department one seven one, the Mayor's Department. So we have three employees that are, that are in that particular category. We have obviously the mayor's, whose rate is set by the Compensation Commission. We have the media, Media Services Director, Troy. And then we have an admin, admin position that's also booked in that, in that department. So those are the three salaries that are reflected in that particular category. Then we've got, you know, again, we've got some special events there, and some of that, you know, tends to kind of fluctuate between, you know, special events with the city, with the city council and with the mayor. The professional consultant, we've been maintaining services of a media advisor, and so that's reflected in the professional, I'm sorry. Yeah, so that, that's reflected there in the media consultant category, the professional consultant category. We've got Nankin Transit, which is a program, I believe it's through SMART, is it through, is it through?
Nankin, I don't know if it's through SMART, but it's, it's a transportation.
For seniors, and so we pay certain amount of money to, for our, for Inkster seniors to be included in this county-wide program. And that's, so that's what Nankin Transit is. Then we have our, our consultant lobbyists, GCSI, I think they were here a couple of months ago. We had approved a new contract for them at, right at three thousand dollars a year.
Three thousand a month.
I'm sorry, three thousand a month, yeah. And then we've got some monies for conferences and workshops and subscriptions and memberships listed there. So moving on down to the city clerk, we have three positions there, I'm, two, I'm sorry, we've got two positions there. We've got the clerk and the deputy clerk. We also have some money set aside for temporary salaries that are included there. And remind me again, the elections, what election cycle are we on this year for going through to next June?
Right now, we're doing a twenty-five special election.
And then we'll have, will we have a primary by, by June of next year?
No.
There's nothing, okay.
Primary will be in August next year.
Okay. So we've got, we've got the two employees along with some temporary salaries that are reflected, reflected there. And then turning the page on, still, still in the clerk's department, two one five, we've got a number of different categories, as you can see, the professional consultant, that's generally the election-related people that work along with the, the city clerk. And, you know, different amounts that are, that are reflected there. You know, we've got the equipment maintenance and education and training, equipment and the like that are listed there. So if there's any questions, you know, we can certainly, certainly answer those. And then just keep in mind, some, you know, some of the projected amounts are, are going to change based on, as we kind of go through the year-end process and make sure we've captured all of the expenses and everything.
Yep, I got a whole list for the city clerk, first of all, I want to know all his plans.
Okay, next is our IT. We have budgeted for, you know, coming off of last year, we had an outside consultant that was working on our items. We now have an in-house employee. We also have, have included funds for potential, a second employee with the, with the clerk. I can't recall the exact title, but it would be kind of a.
Technician or?
Yeah, a technician to work alongside. So we, we included some additional monies there. But again, I did want to point out that we have kind of moved from the professional consultant to the, the employee. And so that's one of the differences between this year and last year. Operating supplies, we would generally include things such as different types of software and the like. Our IT director's been pretty, you know, pretty on top of making sure we've got some things in place that we hadn't previously had, such as some of the security protocols that we need. You know, we've been exposed to a lot of different phishing attempts and fraud attempts. And so we want to make sure that we've set aside adequate funding to properly, you know, get the software and everything that we need in connection with that. And then the, the other thing is, we've got the, the BSNA. You see, you know, we had a pretty sizable amount for last year. That projected amount is going to go up. We, we've had, we've been working on finalizing the bill for, for that in terms of the, the final services and everything with them. But we, we, you know, moved to the cloud with that over the last, over the last fiscal year with BSNA.
And that's the professional consultant?
Correct, yeah, professional services, that's BSNA, which is our, our main, you know, accounting and, and other services that are done, building and everything is done through BSNA.
Obvious, obviously that Finney's is not here, but at some point, and maybe this might be more of a question for the mayor, are we going to get on some type of computer psycho program where every three years we psycho out? Because I know even in the clerk's office, did you get your new computer yet?
We got a new printer.
Okay.
Why, why you start this year?
I'm going to say it, because our printer is so slow.
We got, we got a new camera.
Okay.
We just did.
Actually, we have a situation because Microsoft is changing their format, we're going to have to upgrade the computers now. So this is the last year, I think we can use the operating system and the little PCs we have. And we're discussing now whether just move to straight laptops and just eliminate the PC. I don't know why anybody has a PC anymore, I don't get it. But we're going to have to buy a whole bunch of laptops this year, so. It's all his fault, too, right there.
Speaking of IT director.
I, I asked that question because, Mr. Mayor, I would like to see us every three, you know, technology changes.
Cody, the question was, we're talking about IT, by the way. Are we going to get on a cycle, like a three-year cycle replacing computers, and that's what we want to do. But this year, we're going to have to buy a whole bunch of computers because of the operating system. Because Microsoft's not going to be using anymore, no more updates for. So we're, we're going to have to buy a lot of computers, and then we'll stay on, we'll replace them every so many years, or when they break, you know.
Yeah, so it would be on a warranty, at least program for three years, because the change has to happen throughout the city because in October, Windows ten actually dies. And once that happens, we're, we're gated away.
Okay, thank you.
So those new computers are going to be reflected in each individual department's budget?
I don't know, we haven't figured that part out.
Come on, you just said we all need a new computer.
Oh, we don't have choice. Might lay off a couple people and get some computers. Or if we have budget, I'm joking. Or if we have like extra people in a department, but we may wait three, four months to hire them and get, get a hard work. You know what I mean, so we're juggling all the time, we can't do everything we want to do, but we got to get the computers. Well, I was going to ask, I think you kind of covered it with the BSNA, with the professional consultant, we was at seventy-five and we went up to one forty-three. Like, what was the process in that?
I'm sorry, what line are you looking at?
An item zero one.
Oh, yeah. So some of that was work that was, was done with the, the folks from Nerds Express. And so that's why you see the number, numbers a lot lower. And then, you know, we did, there, there, and there were some kind of one-off activities that they did, you know, there were certain, we had the regular monthly charges, but then there were certain one-off things that they were doing that were costing in, you know, above and beyond the regular monthly. I think that was one of the reasons why we, you know, kind of made the decision that that situation wasn't working. Because a lot of what we were doing, they were charging us for, so things like the, so, you know, they were charging us for the consulting fees, but then they were, they were also charging us for the windows, and then there was the.
Sort of licensing, because they.
They were upselling us.
Putting it through all the licenses.
They were upselling us.
Like, we're untangling all that now, like, we didn't have our own Microsoft licensing, they all went into their company. So they just sent us an invoice with a number on it. We don't get the invoice from Microsoft, you know, so we really don't.
We were paying, yeah, we were paying them.
Same thing with equipment, we have to buy something, they sent us an invoice saying laptop, eight hundred and ninety dollars. Which might have cost them seven hundred and fifty dollars. Sometimes they put a little juice on whatever equipment we buy, but we just, you know, we, not, we didn't know, we knew when we took over. Wait a minute, why, where's the original invoice? I want to see how much you paid for. But I think it was common practice in the last administration that they were marking up the equipment as we bought it. And no one really questioned, so they just kept doing it.
There was a couple of us that did.
Yeah, and we didn't get check registers that would show us something outside of our vendors.
No, we would get a reimbursement, so they're for like twenty thousand. And we asked what it was for, could we get a? And we asked what it was for, could we get a detailed invoice? And to this day, we've never received one.
And we didn't, we never got budgeted anyways, anyway, so we didn't know what was coming in or whatever, so we didn't, we didn't know.
That's right, that's true, that's true. Yeah, so it was kind of, it was a mess. They, they ended up making a decent amount of money, last year they.
Um, next item is, uh, treasury. So we, we did add, as you recall, we did add a, uh, one, an additional employee in treasury. That's the, uh, treasury manager, Regina Washington. And so that, that's kind of the reason for the increase there, because we did, um, you know, we did, add, she came in at, you know, towards the end of this fiscal year, but she'll obviously be here for the entirety of next fiscal year. But one thing to keep in mind, uh, some of those monies for her are gonna be reimbursed by the state for the first fiscal year. But we're seeing the, uh, you know, basically seeing the cost of that, um, being shown there. And then, you know, while we have a number of, of, uh, employees that work out of treasury, some of them are charged partially or wholly over to the water fund as well. So, you know, we have seven or eight people that work in treasury, but not all of them are charged one hundred percent to the, uh, to the treasury or general fund budget. So that's why that number doesn't always coincide to the actual bodies that you may see in treasury on a day-to-day basis.
Hey Darren, um, get down to the first, professional consultant. I know we used to holler about this one, cause we never knew what was going over there, thirty thousand. But I see the projected was eighty-four thousand.
I'm sorry, what, what, what are you looking at?
That's mine, item, um, one oh one, uh, what is it, one oh one, two five three, eight oh one?
Yes.
I was just looking at the projected.
Yeah.
Professional consultant.
Yeah, and I honestly don't know.
We didn't know that either. There was something, remember?
And again, sometimes, some of these may get, um, tied to the wrong general ledger. You see, we got an eight oh one dot zero zero and an eight oh one dot eight hundred. You know, I don't know why that would, that eighty-four, I'm sure is some activity that probably belongs in the, um, category below. If you can see, we're, we're only at two thirteen below that when we had three twenty. That was budgeted, so that, again, that could be another, um, another situation where we've got the, uh, just a general ledger account being, um, the wrong general ledger account. And as we, generally, as we go through the year-end process, we'll, we'll typically move those funds around to the correct general ledger. But again, if you look at thirty thousand being budgeted and three twenty being budgeted below that, a total of three fifty, those two numbers are, are, you know, right around three hundred, three ten.
If I'm not mistaken, I, I have to look back at my notes, but I think they, the last administration added that line item. And I think some of that money went over for the rec center, if I'm not mistaken. I'm not sure, I think that's what it was.
Rec center?
Oh, because how they was paying Darren, not Darren, I'm sorry, Darryl.
Well, well, but that line item was never there prior to, the last administration put that line item there. And that's why I was looking at it for eighty-four thousand dollars, like what did they, you know? Okay, well, just, just check on that line item.
Mm-hmm, I will certainly do that.
Cause I don't want to make any speculations.
Yep.
But I, I, I recall and I think they used it, they added that line item, but they used it for something else that was in the rec center. I'm not sure, I have to go back and look at my notes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
But I'll, I'll, I'll certainly, uh, note that and get that.
You know what, you maybe you down here, the next one's building maintenance, I see seventy-five thousand down there. So that may, that probably would be something that Darren, that, that sounds more attributable to Darren. You talking about Dale Davis?
No, 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 Green.
Green, oh.
I mean, when, when, like I said, they had added that line item. That line item was never there. If you go back and look at your old budget books, that line item was never there. They added that line item and we always questioned that, what was going on with that line item?
So that he got double paid?
He was half in there.
The full salary for both?
And I'm not sure if it was his salary or, I'm not sure what was going on in that line item, but there was something that they created. I mean, they just added.
Wow.
I'm saying seventy-five thousand a building, ain't it?
Professional consultant.
Oh, that's seventy-five hundred.
Okay.
Oh, I see you saying, uh, requested.
When did we, when did Darren come on? Cause I was like.
Darryl left, Dale Green left, January? January.
Twenty-four.
Him and Rad left, both left in January.
Okay, I'm like, would it be reflected in this budget? Okay.
But I'll, I'll, I'll get that, I'll get that information, yep. So we won't, uh, about that. Yeah, so, you know, we've got the audit services, um, assessing, that's, that's, uh, Wayne County Assessor, that's Mario. You know, we, we're billed with them on a monthly basis. And we are trying to consistently put in, um, monies for education and training in many departments, because that's something that we're trying to really, um, put a increased focus on, making sure our staff, is, you know, trained and staying up, uh, on all the latest developments and everything, whether that's citywide or something specific to a particular department. So, um, that's something we're trying to make sure that we're, um, setting aside necessary resources for that. So that's one of the things I, I feel like we hadn't done that in the past.
Do we speak to these, uh, conferences and workshops? Is that what you just told me?
Uh, conferences and workshops and training, education and training. So next is building maintenance, and this is, um, primarily for costs tied to, you know, labor and materials and contractors for, um, um, cost tied, again, cost tied to the maintenance and upkeep of city facilities, um, that the general fund is responsible for. That's gonna be City Hall and the, um, Justice Center. And fire, yeah, fire station for sure. So we, we, we try and make sure we've got, um, some employees that we can use for that. So that's, that's why we have monies, uh, attributed to salaries there. And then you see some of the, um, uh, Jerome, we've got seventy-five thousand in professional consultant for building maintenance.
That's what you're talking about right now. What's that? Inside and outside.
Yeah.
I'll do it. And some of the carpet is, in certain areas, like the clerk's office needs to be replaced. Yeah, it's just little miscellaneous type stuff.
Yeah. So we, you know, one of the things, and I mentioned this earlier, we, we haven't necessarily, because I think of our financial condition, we haven't been staying up on some of the repairs and maintenance and, and everything. You know, I think everybody kind of considers City Hall to be newish and the Justice Center to be newish, but you still gotta, time has been passing along and even with the new, new, uh, asset, you still gotta, uh, maintain it. And so, you know, when it comes to painting, the parking lot, we've, we've also set aside, I think we put like eighty thou-, um.
Yeah, we need a million dollars for just.
What was the eighty thousand for?
I said it's at eighty thousand, it's like that. We said it's at eighty thousand for the speed.
Okay, okay. No, we had some, some, in this, this budget, we got, uh. Okay.
We didn't spend it.
But, but I mean, we, it's needed. Like I say, you know, we talked about what's needed at the court. I know police department has, has needs, it's just something we haven't been doing, um, you know, again.
I heard the mayor gave you a million dollars for his parking lot, or more right here. Not more than a million.
For that, for this parking lot, I'm more than.
Yeah, cause we had to do, the issue with this parking lot is the drain.
The drains are messed up.
So unless I fix the drainage, I could do an overlay and it'd look just like that in a year.
Oh, wow.
So I had to correct the drainage and move those light poles in the item. Where it should have been initially, not in the parking lot.
I know you do, you're gonna go get a grant for that. Look, look, I, look, I have faith in you, okay.
Yes, sir. So, you know, again, I think part, you know, part of it is just for us to identify those things that ha- need to go, again, to either labor or, or some type of, uh, cost associated with the building. And just understanding that we haven't been keeping up with the needs of the building. And, you know, we know we don't have the resources that we need, but we do want to start, you know, trying to tackle some of these things. And I think, you know, one of the, like, mayor mentioned, we do, we would like to paint City Hall next fiscal year. I think we've been talking about maybe over the holiday period. And we know that there's some needs over at the Justice Center. I know Chief's been really looking to kind of get an entirely new, um, fire station. And so one of the things that we're gonna, uh, need to do is just to really put together an entire capital improvement program and plan, at least be, being able to lay out and cost out what the overall needs are. That's one of the things that we've identified for next fiscal year that we want to do, bring that to council. You know, we know we don't necessarily have the money for that, but the first step is identifying what those needs are and how much we think that may cost.
Um, no, Mr. Carrington, um, regarding like the fire department, in the past, when I was working at the state, like right before COVID, the way they had went about seeking funds out, had got approved, was they were turning their fire department, I mean, it's mainly occupied by males, but their chief was female at the time, and they were making sure that it was gonna be, um, how you want to say, I don't forgot the terminology they use, but they were making sure it was both quarters for males and females. And so that did get approved by the state legislature, but then COVID hit and they took all the monies back. So that might be something, you know, keeping that in mind, because they were able to, um, wasn't like they were doing anything shady. It was just like, look, in, in, back in the day, nobody ever really accounted for females being firefighters. And we want to modernize and have it for both sexes, so whomever we hire will come in and feel comfortable. And, uh, they were getting ready to redo Garden City's whole fire department, or at least a, a big majority of it. That, that just might be something to look at in the future.
So I've provided, uh, quite a bit of information this Saturday. One, currently what's going, what's the problem with the fire station right now, and I invite everybody to come up to our table and look yourself. It's in complete disrepair, it really is. But I've also, um, looked into the process of designing a new fire station as well. And I've provided, again, and I'll provide it to council as well, everything that goes into designing a new fire station, how, what they're looking for as far as, you know, health and safety, as far as gender is concerned, all that. So I've done a tremendous amount of research on that. Um, and again, looking for finances, right, so looking at grants. And we'll see where we are with this administration, but it is definitely on our forefront for sure.
I think that's why I'm interested in seeing, like you said, like the overall, like, maintenance plan for the city. Cause like, you said seventy-five thousand to paint this whole thing? Inside and outside, like, could we, like, you know what I mean, like, is it, like, could, like, I get like some things are necessary, right? But like, if we paint in here or something like that, could we then move the money to help the clerk get her new computers? Like, you know what I mean? Like, does everything have to be done in one swoop, or can we, like, as a group prioritize?
Oh, we do that, we, we, we do that all, I mean, just cause we put it in, A, doesn't mean we're gonna spend it. Two, we probably need to spend like three hundred thousand on maintenance this year, but we put seventy-five in the column. I mean, the rec center, we need to take the carpet, that needs to go. And that's what, uh, from a public standpoint, that's what everybody sees. No one sees money, nobody cares about my office. But the rec center they go to and the carpet, in all years, people complain how dirty the carpet, well, we need to take the carpet up. And we need to put commercial-grade flooring down, well, and what was the last bit we got? For the commercial, to replace the carpet.
I mean, that's the first thing that people are gonna say, right? Like, we need money for carpet in the rec center, but y'all just painted the whole inside of City Hall, like, what's the point of that? You know what I mean? And so.
It hasn't been painted since.
It hasn't been painted since.
I mean, so we just have a lot of needs, I mean, obviously some being more visible and important than others, and we're gonna do those first.
This is your primary bill.
But, but the, the, the other thing, uh, Councilman, is that, um, the rec center, we, we, from a philosophic, philosophical standpoint, we try and have the rec center operate solely off of the recreation millage. So when we start talking about these funds, um, you know, if we don't paint City Hall, it's not.
It's not gonna hurt me.
Yeah, and we need to make sure people understand, you know, to your point, people may not necessarily understand that. But, but for the most part, we don't, um, you know, we've tried to have the, you know, rec center, even though it's, there's limited funds, we have been able to supplement it and address some of the capital needs through grants, like the roof and the HVAC system and other things, um, because they have limited funding due to the, um, to them living off of their millage. But when we look at general fund, you know, right now, we have very little money that's going to the, um, to the recreation center.
And that was just an example. I just want to be, like you said, fiscally responsible for the taxpayers. Okay, yeah, I heard about that, okay. I mean, I'm here, right? Yeah, like, I'm here. Okay, but yeah, I just wanted to voice that, it's neither here nor there.
But, but as you said, um, you know, I think, uh, you know, we'll kind of go around and assess all the needs and, and try and, um, uh, put a number on some of those things and really, you know, be able to, uh, evaluate, you know, prioritize things, um, but, you know, we did want to put some money in the budget, cause this is really the guide for the next twelve months here.
Understood. I just want to be a part of it, cause like, it, it has come back to us to justify it, right? And so then instead of us always being like, well, Jerome, or call the mayor, it's like, no, we can equally justify why we chose to paint City Hall.
Yeah.
Instead of addressing something else, or why we, like the speed bump, yes, go at last, like, council meeting, you know what I mean? Like, we can help justify those things, instead of just kind of saying like, we don't know, cause then we don't like we're doing our job, you know? And our job is ultimately the budget, so, that, yeah, the end.
Understood, definitely, yeah.
Thank you, thanks, Jerome.
Do you hear that often?
A lot.
So the, the one thing, I, uh, didn't get our insurance number in there. I've been, uh, working with the insurer, we're in a process of updating, um, that amount. I should have something in the next couple of days from them. You know, we, we've been working, that, that's basically the city's general liability insurance. It's a pretty significant amount, but, um, we've been working with them to try and look at some ways that we can, uh, try and, and not necessarily lower the cost, but, you know, kind of get the city, um, in a better position where w- with whatever we're paying, it either lowers the cost or lowers the, lowers, lowers the city's exposure. You know, right now, we're effectively self-insured in many, many regards, um, you know, so we've got a lot of exposure in that. And so, um, you know, before we get the, the budget approved, I do want to get a, a, um, a decent estimate on what, what next year's gonna look like. Uh, we don't think we're gonna be in a position to get some of the things achieved for next year, but we're taking steps that hopefully in a, in a year or two, we'll be able to really change the overall coverage that the city has. Cause right now, again, we're, we're just self-insured in many regards up until a certain point. And a lot of the claims that we have, the smaller claims, we're paying right out of the, um, right out of the city's general fund budget oftentimes. So you see building maintenance, building equipment, you know, a lot of that is just our regular, um, services that we, uh, we incur, not necessarily some of the capital improvement, one-off things that we had, um, had wanted to, uh, wanted to adhere to. Again, we do, you know, Jerome, we do have. Um, again, we do, you know, Jerome, we do have eighty thousand in capital improvements on top of the seventy-five for, um, s- s- for a study or something for, okay, that's right, I, I thought it, I thought it was, um. You got my hopes up, I thought you was gonna fix the parking lot for eighty thousand.
That's what the engineer is, to come back with a value and tell us, hey, this is what you need, and this is how much it actually will cost. What's for that study?
Pay money to, so we can pay money, huh? Then, um, we've got, uh, um, I think, you know, I think that's pretty much it, you know, again, you know, we're, we're trying to start being a little bit more, um, proactive when it comes to managing of the facilities. I think that's the overall goal is, um, you know, we know we don't have all the resources that we need, but we're trying to be proactive, putting money in the, in the, into the budget, even if it's, you know, a lot less than we would like, but at least to start addressing some of these things. And then the other thing is, um, the capital, you know, capital improvement plan, um, where we take a, a look at all the city's facilities and really, um, identify those and put a number to them. And that, again, that's something that we're gonna be doing over the next, uh, next several months. Um, uh, we expect that, that should be done before the end of the calendar years, our, our goal with that. City attorney, um, you know, I think that's, uh, pretty much reflected there. We've got, um, the legal fees, uh, you know, in addition to our, uh, city attorney, the Perkins Law Group, we do have some other, um, special counsel where we do incur fees. Um, so we just try to, uh, to allocate for, um, for those amounts. Um, and then, uh, along with the, uh, insurer, one of the things that they're being very adamant about is for us to better manage how we do the legal settlements. So, um, we've been doing a lot of smaller settlements and haven't been tracking them completely from a risk management standpoint. So one of the things we're gonna work with them is exactly how we capture that. And, you know, whether that should be in the city attorney budget or somewhere else, we, we're gonna, um, you know, that's one of the things, as they, uh, give us some, some quotes, they're gonna give us a little bit of direction. Um, cause the issue is, we, you know, we might have a minor accident that we pay a thousand dollars, uh, settlement for, and we just pay it out of legal settlement. Um, what the insurer wants to be able to do is for us to take that through a claims process so that we have a history of what our, our things are. Um, and, you know, we haven't, we've been handling it from a financial standpoint and just a, a liability standpoint. Because we don't have a risk manager, um, on staff, we haven't necessarily been taking those steps to, to really show what our, our track record is. So when we go out to the insurance market and they look at it, at what, you know, costs or losses that we may have had, a lot of times, there's nothing showing, um, because we aren't, you know, taking it, booking it, there's a whole process that can be in place. And so, um, you know, either this year or, or next year, we're gonna look to, you know, get a better process in place and not just treating it as a legal settlement where we're cutting a check. Um, and so we're gonna, you know, bring, bring more back to council, uh, on that. But that's kinda one of the things, as you, as you know, our insurance ends in August, so we're right in the process now of getting some, some quotes and bids and everything for, uh, for next year.
So that's not the, the levies, cause the levies is always on the.
So, so right now, we don't have any levies currently?
Right.
Um, this is just when we just get to a, you know, a settlement or like a, um.
Something that is not, not, we don't have to put judgment.
Exactly, so I mean, a lot of, you know, sometimes it might be somebo- someone, you know, may, an employee may have backed into someone or something like that, and there's a thousand dollars that we agreed to. Um, or, you know, so, we may have caused some damage to something, and, you know, five hundred dollar, um, we, again, we historically have just been put, putting that into legal settlements. Um, but in essence, it's, it's, it's more of a insurance, um, item that, for tracking purposes, we may need to look at, um, you know, kinda rerouting it and handling it differently. But when we, you know, when we start talking about actual legal settlements, court cases and something like that, that, that's something different and distinct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Um, so, uh, next, next up is the, um, personnel. We've got, uh, which is our HR, as you know. Um, so we have our HR director, she's the only employee that is, um, uh, booked on that, um, booked under that department. She does have a volunteer, uh, volunteer help, but there, uh, there's no other additional cost. So right now, it's just the one employee, uh, operation. Um, you know, another big thing is we do book our workers' comp through this department. Um, and that tends to be a pretty, you know, depending upon what's going on in, in, in any particular time period, that can be a, a fairly significant, uh, cost that we incur. Um, and then under professional consultant, a lot of times, that's gonna be, um, different charges that are incurred for new employees. So if there's like background checks or, um, drug testing, any type of screening, oftentimes we'll book those through, um, uh, through that professional consultant. So depending upon how many employees that may come, uh, within a given fiscal year, that number can, can vary one way or the other. Yes.
I was gonna say, I have a question, moving further down to education and training.
Mm-hmm.
So we jumping from two fourteen to fifteen thousand, but you're saying it's only one employee?
So, some of that is gonna be training that she does for this, for the, you know, people outside of her department. That's just not for her training, she's planning to put on training for, um, you know, we might do like a sexual harassment training for the entire city or whatever, um, for, so that's, in this particular instance, it's not just for her or her department. This is, this could, uh, reflect things that are being done, you know, by her on behalf of, um, you know, you know, particular department or other departments within the city. All right. Um, next up is police, PD. Um, did wanna look at what, where we're projecting right now. Uh, we have budgeted about two point seven million. That was split between permanent salaries and overtime, two point three million of permanent and, um, four hundred thousand of overtime. Um, we're trending well above the four hundred thousand in overtime, but we're trending well below on the permanent salaries. Um, you know, I think the, the key thing to, to, you know, see here, um, and I, you know, can speak to, you know, the reason for the increase in overtime, but we have, you know, we expect we've been able to manage keeping it, keeping those costs in line with each other. So what I mean is that the co- combination of the salaries, uh, permanent salaries and the overtime, the total is, is the same in terms of where we're projecting, what we budgeted. The split may be different, we didn't expect to have as much overtime, but the total ending cost is the same. Um, and, you know, and all, you know, just, just really kinda cutting to the chase, a lot of, a lot of that is just tied to the vacancies that we've been managing around. Um, not wanting to, uh, cut operations or cut services, um, you know, I think that the chief has had to kinda manage around those vacancies, and that's, that's really a, a big ration, a reason for the, um, the higher, uh, overtime. You know, but again, I will point out from a financial standpoint, we've had, uh, you know, we have a situation where the totals are, the totals are in line. It's just we, we got there differently than we would have, uh, projected or would have liked. You know, we just ran out more overtime than we would have, uh, wanted to. Um, you know, again, we're keeping the same number of budgeted positions, and the chief has been working, have a couple people at the academy now, um, or maybe several people at the academy, um, so we're still maintaining the same level of, uh, service. And if we can get that staffing level there, we can then see the overtime kinda come down to a more manageable level.
Um, I do have a question, Chief, do you know offhand how many vacancies that you have?
We have currently four with the two that's in acad- not counting the two that's in academy now, we have four vacancies. So normally, what, what we're running, especially on the night shift, is only two officers and a supervisor.
Are they on eight hour shifts?
They're on twelve hour shifts. So the goal is to at least get three and a supervisor.
Maybe we should do some signing bonuses.
On each shift, but it's not safe. You know, so, a lot of times, if an officer is willing to come in and work overtime and be that third officer, then we allow them to come in and be that third officer, because, you know, we, our call, call volume is high. So, that's, that's the reason for the, the overtime, the high level of overtime.
Unfortunately, we're better off hiring another officer.
Yes.
Cause overtime, they're, they're making.
I'm gonna have double time sometimes, yeah.
What we're doing is, that's our goal, is to hire and fill these vacancies. Um, however, it's eight months before you get a person on the street. So every time we send a new person to the police academy, you have to do four months in the police academy, and then when they come out of the police academy, they have to do four months training at the department.
Wow.
So by the time they're completely ready to go on their own, eight months. So you're looking at almost a year before we can put an officer on the street. So the two that'll be coming out, once they come out, uh, August, September, they have to go through four months training, so they won't be road ready until the beginning of next year.
So is that for new officers? So what, uh, what about, uh, police officers from another city? Do they have to still go through their same training?
So no, if they're already certified, they just, they get hired in and then they go through the, just the four month training at the department.
Okay.
But the problem we're running into, and a lot of other cities are running into, it's hard to get people that are already certified to apply for these positions.
Okay.
Especially being that Inster is one of the lowest paid police departments.
Right, right.
Um, so our only hope is to get recruits, send them through the police academy, and then send them through all the training, so that way we'll have extra bodies on the street.
Okay.
What's the turnover at the police department? Like, is it like, are we sending a lot of people to the academy and they end up leaving maybe a year after the fact?
Well, we just recently, a bill was passed, so we make them sign a contract, a five-year contract. So if they leave between one to five years, they have to pay a certain amount of, of the funds back to us.
Yeah, we've been loo- we've been losing a lot of them.
I was gonna say that.
If she took, what, three, four of ours?
They took, yes, they took four of ours.
Yeah.
Cause they were starting them off at eighty-five.
Starting out. Not that.
He was sprinting. Write it down on his river slide.
Probably half of what they starting them off at.
Just something to consider, I guess, I guess.
Well, can we do a signing bonus or something, Mayor, to try to compensate for that?
Who, who would give this out?
Maybe we could take something, I'm just saying in regards to this over, I don't know.
So, so, we did.
Trying to attract.
You know, we did, um, increase the salaries on the last contract, and as I mentioned, we, we, this is the last year of the contract. So, you know, we will be at some point over the next six to nine months, twelve months or whatever, bringing, um, you know, we'll, would have started discussions and then eventually bringing those agreements. So those types of things are certainly, um, you know, things that can be entertained. We, you know, they did a good job, that, I, I'm speaking of the Teamsters, the patrol, uh, officers, um, of showing what is, uh, earned by officers in neighboring communities. Um, you know, they, they did a good, good job of showing us just how, how far down the, um, you know, line we are. But, uh, you know, we understand, you know, again, limitations, but we will have a chance to visit some of those things in the next, uh, you know, next fiscal year, as, you know, we start discussing what the contract's gonna be and working with the chief to figure out, you know, how we can set compensation. You know, we do, you know, try and do some creative things. We have the, um, uh, Neighborhood Stabilization Program, where I think a, a number of officers have taken advantage of that. Um, and so, you know, trying to figure out ways that we can, uh, in addition to trying to increase compensa- compensation, ways that we can make it more attractive. I think Chief, you know, getting more local people who may have some commitment to this community, um, is another thing that, uh, you know, can, can yield some benefits. But, you know, we understand the, the reality that we aren't, um, not only are we not paying them, it makes it, um, risky for people to come and recruit them.
I have one last question, um, and I'm sure you're doing this, Chief, are we, do we recruit people that are in the academy now? Do we go out there, have conversations with them and try to get them to?
We do, but when we go to the academies and we talk to people who are, we call them pre-service. I mean, they put themselves through the academy, they don't, yeah, have a department to go to, the pay is always, because you're going against Oakland County, you're going against Arby Hills, you're going against Farmington. So you're going against all those departments who pay a lot more. Now, and I must say this about our officers, we have some dedicated officers in Inster. The ones that stay here with the pay that they get, um, they are really dedicated to the city, right? Because they could go a number of places and work. Um, also, there's other things that we have to do as an administration within a department. We do a lot of other things to kinda keep them here, like, I cook for them. You know, we do a lot of little things that makes them happy. So those are some of the things, I have to get very creative when it comes to keeping them happy and keeping them coming to work.
Right.
So, um, the officers that we do have here, they are dedicated to the city. So, um, the turnover that we had, I think those are people that probably weren't as dedicated. Um, but the ones that are currently here, we haven't had anyone talk about leaving or going anywhere since the four that we lost to Ipsy, so. So, when are you cooking for us?
Just, just out of curiosity, Chief, when you're talking about the creativity, has the conversation been had with any of the local businesses as far as, uh, for our public safety employees to receive discounts for patronizing those entities? For instance, when I worked at AT&T and I showed up one day at the gas station, she said, oh, who do you work for? And I said, I'm, I'm an AT&T utility worker. She said, oh, well, we give discounts to the city of, your employees, but we'll give you a discount today.
We can't do that.
They get lots of discounts, trust me.
We can't, we can't solicit it, right?
They get discounts.
If they give it to us, we're really not supposed to take it, um.
Now, when I wa- when I'm with Hall, he don't, I pay way more than what he pays.
Yeah.
I'd be like, they're like, he's in a uniform, what, what about my suit? You know? Gotta pay.
Put the uniform on.
I ain't, I ain't wearing no polyester.
Maybe we can, maybe we can explore when the contract is up, just how, so you're not having to get creative by yourself, cause then also, like, you're burnt out as our chief, you know what I mean, we wanna retain you as well. So I feel like, if we all come together and just kinda figure out a creative way to kinda like, keep everybody here? So I think that's a narrative across all departments in Inster, is people are really just dedicated to our city, cause we do not pay well, you know? So, I don't know, like, maybe.
You know, if you just tell them those type of things, I appreciate them being here, I think that goes a long way, you know what I mean?
That's all it is, it's money or appreciation.
Yeah, you know, we start an award, they love, they, they love receiving awards, you know what I mean? So we do little different things, once a year, I try to do an employee appreciation. I do it at the end of the summer, cause I know they didn't work like crazy during the summer. So I wait until, you know, we're going into the fall season, we have this big shift day, and they appreciate those type of things, so.
Look, we got off topic.
We gotta pick up, we gotta pick up the pace. I mean, no, we, this is just one fund, this is just a general fund. I'm gonna throw all of them in. We outta time, I mean, our time is up, as far as passing a budget. So I mean, we're not trying to pass a budget, we at least look at, at least go.
We had all of them, I would've been like, no talking, y'all.
This is, this is just a general fund.
Um, just on that point, the general, you know, I think outside of the water fund, the general fund is the most, um, the most time consuming, because that's where we do most of our, um, core services through. So, um, hope, you know, we got general fund, then we got the road funds, recreation fund, um, uh, and the wa- the water fund is gonna be the one that, you know, may, uh, require, grow that, but, um, some time, but I think we can roll through the other ones fairly, fairly quickly.
Is it any significant changes, maybe? I don't know, you can do the highlighted changes that we need to know.
Um.
Where must've been the energy?
Yeah.
Just look at the, the, um, what's coming in and what's coming out. Did you see it?
Look, I see that.
Yeah, yeah.
So, um, you know, I think we were, we were, we were on police there, um. So, um, you know, I think we were, we were, we were on police there, um, you know, I mean, I think, I think the staffing is the main, the main thing there. Uh, not a ton going on in some of the other particular areas. Um, you know, the, I think the thing I will point out is, um, you know, similar to, uh, the building, you know, again, the, the capital, the assets, you know, we start looking at vehicles for police. Um, that's something that at some point, you know, the time to start planning for new cars, not when you need it, you know? Um, and so, that's something that we gotta start, start taking a look at, is our fleet, um, and how we go, you know, go through, you know, kind of talked about the computers and how we wanna have a rotating, um, plan with those, that's something that we need to, uh, keep in mind. Um, because I don't want us just to get locked into the year-to-year thing with a budget and ignore some of the things that may be, you know, a little bit more capital intensive. Um, because a lot of what we focus on is, is, uh, salaries and that type of stuff. But, um, you know, we, uh, gotta keep in mind the assets with the police department is gonna be the vehicles, cause they, they gotta be out on the road, they're, they're racking up mileage. You can see the repairs that is gonna be needed for that. Um, you know, it's a little bit different than the fire department, we'll get into that, where they generally need a few big vehicles, and we have been fortunate to get some grants for that stuff. Um, but it's a little bit, little bit different because, uh, you know, PD has a lot of smaller vehicles. They don't have a one-heated fire engine or a couple rescues and everything, so.
Even speaking on the vehicles, um, are we still with that program, where we get new vehicles?
And, uh, Enterprise?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, we're still with them, yeah.
So they have, they have cut, have they cut some of the maintenance down because we are getting newer ones and?
Um.
You still gonna have maintenance though.
Yeah.
Plus, police vehicles, they, they're being ran so hard.
Right, right, okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's one, you know, it's, I, I, I think it's hard, as, as we go through it, it's hard to imagine like, you driving a car. Yeah, you know, the whole time.
Four hours a day?
Twenty-four seven, yeah.
Like, for real, like, not going to stop them, you driving the car the whole time.
So, would it be, um, I don't know, like, um, I haven't seen any things in Enterprise for a while, but I know when we first got it, um, do they get them, um, turning vehicles like once a year?
No, 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 no. I mean, we, we, we generally on like three, four-year leases with, with them, yeah, no, no, no. It's, um, you know, I mean, the thing, I think, the thing with Enterprise is it, it kind of gives you the opportunity to, um, save on the upfront cost, you can kind of spread it out, and they work with you, figure out when is a good time to trade in a vehicle and, um, and, and that, but it's not like, not a one-year. Yeah, one-year deal.
Naturally, we actually should be like changing them, depending, like you said, twenty-four seven for two years.
Should be on a rotation.
Every two years, right?
Should be a rotation, with at least the police and fire.
Yeah.
Ambulance, we burn up ambulance, how long does it last? Couple years?
Four years, years, years.
You did good.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, cause we just got it, and we do for one, in a little bit.
We just bought one.
I need, I need two more.
Yeah, okay, okay.
We're gonna net though.
Okay. All right, I'm not gonna ask you no more questions then.
No problem. Okay, so, you know, again, I think that, that's the, the other thing I wanted to point out with, with PD. Um, so moving on to, uh, fire, um, we've got, uh, the, you know, the salaries there, uh, overtime, I think, you know, similar situation, but we've been pretty fortunate in terms of managing that overtime. Um, you know, chief can speak to anything in particular in terms of, um, management of the, um, of the, uh, firefighters, but, uh, you know, I think that's, that's pretty much what we, you know, wanna make sure, similar, similar situation, we have a contract that will be coming up, um, with, uh, with them at the end of the, uh, fiscal year. So we'll, you know, we'll have to address that, um, you know, in terms, and I think similar to police, there's some of the same challenges when it comes to recruiting and retention that, uh, that they're facing, um. Yes?
On the salaries permanent for that, did we lose someone? Cause we was requesting one four, we're on that one, eleven, one million, one twenty?
No, no, that, that, that's, that's not, okay, I see what you, yeah, no, it's, it's the fourteen fifty is the correct amount, yeah.
Okay, well, you said, did we lose someone?
No, 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 that's, that's.
So it's the same as the be, as requested, the remaining?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, all right.
We, we basically are keeping the same, same level of staffing, um, and just, uh, trying to capture any increased costs, so that, that is, uh, that is correct. Um, so, um, you know, you see some, some, some of the items here, pension, uh, allowances, life support, those are essentially bonuses that the firefighters are entitled to con- contractually. Um, you know, a thing to keep in mind is, um, you know, operating supplies and things that they need in order to run the department. Um, you know, they could always use some additional support, you know, the guys are, um, and, you know, employees that are there, or, you know, oftentimes there, um, sleeping, eating, that type of stuff. So it's a little bit different, um, situation many times with that. Um, but I think, you know, pretty much, you know, you've got the cost there. As I mentioned, we did have the, um, the grant where we did get a, uh, a brand-new vehicle this year. We brought that to you guys several months ago, where we, we were fortunate to get a, uh, a grant from the federal government, um, that, uh, allowed, uh, fire department to get a, uh, a new vehicle. Um, so yeah, so I think that's pretty much it, I don't know if there's any questions with, uh?
Yeah, just real quick, what is, uh, S U P, Community Emergency Response Team? Where, so, three-three-seven-seven-four-zero-three-three-eight? Is it S U P? So I don't know if that's abbreviated or something.
I think that.
Three-three-seven-seven?
It says, uh, Community Emergency Response, uh, oh, maybe that's the superintendent, is there a superintendent for Community Emergency Response Team? It may be like a bonus that I think is paid to, uh?
On the operating supplies?
What's the number on that one?
Um.
Seven-four-zero-three-three-eight.
Yeah, three-three-seven-seven-four-zero-three-three-eight. Isn't there like a, um, designated like as a?
Yeah, yeah, that's, uh, the, uh, emerg- that's not, not the emergency manager, but it's like the D E M S coordinator, D E M S supervisor.
So, so one, one firefighter is designated for a specific role?
Gotcha.
And they get that, that seventy-five hundred dollars is what they receive to?
Just be a forty-hour position, and the city did away with that, and we put somebody in at that position at four, four hours now, but it's a tremendous amount of work that he has to do with that, so that's why it's a rather good bonus.
Okay, thank you, I was just curious.
Anything else with, um, fire department, any questions or anything?
Nope.
Okay, um, next we have the building department, um, you know, primarily we, we utilize the, um, we utilize the, uh, services of Bucelli. We do have one employee that is, uh, on the books, um, at the building department. Um, and so that's why you see, uh, some of the costs that are there, uh, for that, that city employee. The remainder of the, um, the, uh, people that work in the building department are paid through the contractor, uh, which is Bucelli Group. So you can see, um, on the next page, you'll see, um, uh, under Professionals Consultant, that's where, um, we cover the cost for the, uh, for Bucelli. Any other questions on building? Um, you know, again, it's, it's, um, you know, in addition to the employee, the Bucelli runs that building department, so all the inspectors, building official and everything is covered through that. Um, they take a percentage of the revenues, um, based on the contract that was signed some time ago with, with them. Okay, uh, next we've got code enforcement, um, and so we've got, uh, pretty much just the, uh, employees that are, are staffed in that, uh, that position.
How many, Dan?
Um, we have.
Four, four now.
Four?
So we're bringing animal control officer back, uh, Mills, got Humphries, uh, Myers, and Pace.
But one of the animal control people is actually on the police budget.
Who?
A C O?
The A C O is a, is a, yeah, the A C O.
Part of ordinance?
What's that?
They, they don't have animal control under ordinance?
We, we've been carrying A C O under the police budget.
Why?
Just, yeah, it's just kind of a.
They're part of ordinance.
Yeah. Um, you know, we can certainly move it around, but I, um, but I think one of those is, uh, in the, within, it's included in the police budget. Uh, so pretty much all of the, um, the costs here are, are just gonna be pretty much tied to the, um, to the employees, uh, because they're housed at the, at the police department, didn't make any allowance for office supplies or anything like that. These are just, it's pretty much just to capture the, um, the cost of the employees. Um, so here we have the, uh, Department of Public Works is the next category. Um, we've got, uh, a couple employees that are housed there. Um, and then we also have, uh, the, um, tree trimming law maintenance, a lot of that is our, our, uh, grass cutting that we, we do, um.
I'm sorry, Dan, you're housing permanent salaries or temporary?
Um. It should be, okay, um, that's, I think, I think we had historically ca- captured them in temporary, because they, it was just last year that we made them permanent employees, so we should, um, uh, move that. Before it was a, that, that was a part-time position that we did, um, did make full-time, so. Um, we should, should, we should move that up. Those are, those are two, um, dedicated employees that, um, that work on, uh, work out of the general fund. Um, and then the other big thing is gonna be our, um, uh, tree trimming and grass cutting that we do, uh, during the, um, during, during the warmer months. Um, we have some outside landscapers that, uh, handle that force. Um, and then we also have, and this is kind of where we, we do some of the, you know, things tied to kind of outside maintenance. We also have money in here for boardups and cleanups. Um, if we have to board up a, a home, a vacant home, or if we have to clean up a, a dumping side or something like that, um, that's where the monies are budgeted, uh, budgeted for that there.
Dan, when we do that, if we have to board up, uh, someone's home or clean up, do we put that money that we spent, do we put it on their taxes, or?
We don't, I don't, I don't believe we're allowed to put it on taxes. We have, have some discussions about trying to, you know, bill them for, but a lot of times it's a vacant home and it's, um, you know, not a high success rate in us trying to recapture those, those monies.
And then we board up some of our bills.
Yeah.
So people finalize it.
Um, and the, the, the last thing is, uh, street lighting. I saw we, we had a sizable increase in the, um, street lighting estimate?
That's an estimate.
Okay.
Yeah, till you drill down to actual dollars, we look at the bills for the year.
That allocate and everything.
I pay for the streetlight for the whole city. So I think I did like a three percent increase from what we paid last year.
Um, next is gonna be our planning department. Um, in addition to an employee, we also have, um, some other, uh, professional consultant cost there. I believe it's, um, McKenna that does some work on, on our planning.
They did the ma- master plan.
Master plan, um, but that's, that's primarily the, um, the items that are, that are generally gonna be reflected, uh, reflected in that category. Um, then next is our, um, economic development. And mainly that is the, uh, first rider refusal, which is gonna be, um, the tax sale. So that's, this is essentially where we pay for the tax sales, and then we get that money back from, on revenue, um, that was listed on page, on the, on the first page there. Um, the way that the first rider refuse, first rider refuses the N S P program, and we, again, are just simply a pass-through. We identify the homes that are gonna be, uh, exercising that first rider refusal. We figure out what the cost is, and then we essentially collect those funds from the, um, the, uh, participants in the N S P program. So that's, that's generally gonna be a dollar-for-dollar offset there.
Where'd you put Derek Daddell?
Uh, Derek is in planning.
Planning?
Yeah.
Both him and Chardet?
Yes, yeah, yeah, cause I think, I think there, at times, there was some discussion about community development and planning. I think we just ke- kept them at both in planning.
They get, well, somebody's under seventy, somebody's at seventy-two-five. I know Chardet's under professional consultant.
Okay.
I'm not sure about Derek, I think Derek was here when I got here.
Derek is salaried, he's salaried, yeah.
So that must be him.
Um, so I think that is pretty much it, um. Do, I do, uh, have to, one, one update I do have to do is on the debt service. Um, we do a, um, we do do a supplement out of the general fund for, for one of the bond issues, because it's tied to property taxes. Um, it was, um, for some, the downtown development district, and the capture is, has been below the amount of debt service for years. Um, so the general fund has to make up that, uh, that amount. The good thing is that's gonna be coming, uh, gonna be ending in the next couple of years. So, you know, that, um, you know, it's around roughly four hundred thousand or so that we've been having to, to supplement for those bonds, and, um, I think we've got two more years.
Is that part of the, um, the, that was the Justice Center, right?
Yeah, we, we, there were a couple, couple things, it was the Justice Center, and then we also had some road improvements, I think, for, uh, Annapolis Point.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, were the, were the, um, the, the two things with that, so, um. So we have that, and then, um, we have the, the, the other, other item is we have the, um, uh, retiree stipend, so that, that is a big item. As you guys know, we, the city stopped covering retiree healthcare, uh, years ago. Um, and it's, in place of that, we pay a monthly stipend to eligible retirees. I think it's anyone that was hired before two thousand thirteen, I believe, is eligible for it. Um, so it's, you know, it's, it's a significant amount, you know, usually around six, seven hundred thousand dollars a year, uh, six hundred fifty to seven hundred thousand dollars a year. And we, um, uh, you know, have to, we don't, it's just we have to, we have, we have been paying those costs. Um, you know, the thing to keep in mind, the benefit of it, is that it's a fixed amount, we know how much it is. Doesn't generally go up like health insurance, where, you know, if you look over the last five, ten years, if we were paying seven hundred thousand dollars five years ago, it'd probably be close to a million dollars by now that we would be paying, so. Um, but that is, uh, you know, a year-to-year cost that the city incurs just to cover effectively retiree healthcare. Okay, um, five, ten-minute break here?
Two, five.
Five. So do we wanna jump to water fund, or do we wanna cover the, um, other minor funds?
I don't care.
Uh, did y'all have any other questions? Councilman Rogers, Bishop, Scott, did y'all have any other questions?
No.
I appreciate y'all.
Mr. Mayor, you ain't had it. I thank you for not having a question.
I was gonna say, what I saw, no questions. What I saw, like, as far as the meter installation go, the people that I've been talking to, even some of my family members, there's just no urgency in them. I'm telling them, like, soon as I got mine, I took a picture and sent the letter and said, hey, when y'all get a chance, you gonna get a letters, your unique, your, your unique code and stuff, get online, schedule it. Um, it's real simple, or call the number, blah, 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 blah.
I think once I shoot the commercial, I'll shut them off, it'll be some urgency.
Oh, it's gonna blow fire.
I wanna get Councilman, Councilwoman Rogers with me, so we do like the trash.
She good with the videos.
This what happens when I shit your water.
He got it all in vision. He gonna produce and shoot it.
You'd never let that shit down.
So I missed a chance and went to get the road budget, so we could talk about that. I don't have to come back. Y'all can talk about the trash, but it all, but I don't.
We do, like, they running over lights and electric poles.
Hey, the residents, if you have, they ain't getting a water rate increase this year.
There's some crazy increases that they got.
Okay. Cause they like twenty, cause they were complaining about it.
But at least they use more rest and see like, that you need to.
Yeah, right.
Oh, Councilman Holligan, you got any questions?
I'm just gonna knock out his numbers in my head.
Like, you don't know the way they eat that to be like, mm.
They finished all ready?
Hi.
Hi.
Now we gonna talk about major local roads. So. As you guys know, if you don't know, our road, um, budget is funded by Act fifty-one money, which comes from the gas tax. And, uh, I know that we just recently got an increase. I'm just waiting for it to come through. I think we were for, was it two point six to, I think, seven million? I believe it's seven million, right? Yeah. So, yeah, yeah. So that's on the revenue side, and then on the expense side, we have a lot, road projects in the hopper. Last week, no, this Monday, North River started. So that will be, you won't be seeing those people here at the meetings anymore. That project has started, and that came in like one point four, right? One point four million. Uh, we looking to do, um, a temporary patch from Eastern to just a little past Ince Road or Avondale, like we did up to Eastern. Just so the church will be a little more, and those people in that area, in the school. Not a permanent, but just a temporary, like we did there. Uh, I put the money in the budget for that this year. We looking to finish Avondale twenty thirty. If the funding comes straight. Uh, I did request road funds. I did send a, I did send our representative in Lansing. I sent him a request for ninety-eight million dollars in road.
Wow.
And that included Harrison. And some other, and a lot of local streets. God Daily, uh, Glenwood, Rosewood, streets like that, that are in mu- in much need of repair.
Rosewood is jacked up.
Sherborn, streets like that.
Can we get a copy of that, uh, request, just so we are on the same page? Cause a lot of times, like, when the residents are asking us, they're like, oh, we'll touch base with Jerome. Well, I talked to him already. I don't wanna talk to him.
Okay.
Or they, you know, so.
I, I'll send it out to you guys in the morning.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and, um, we just pecking away, I mean, at the end of the day, and the mayor and, and Mr. Carrion said, Carrie tell you the same thing. We need somebody in Lansing to give us some road money. They give me plenty water and infrastructure money, but no road money. And DC, I know the governor and, uh, what's the other guy? The Democrat, the Republican guy, they got a budget up there they fighting over for roads. Uh, we just wanna see how much it's gonna trickle down to us.
Right.
And then we'll sit down with the mayor and, and look at what's critical, and where he, what direction he wants to go in. And all I ask is, when I come before you guys with the road outlay, if we get this money, they support us. It might not be what you want, but it's what we gotta work with. And it, and, you know, sometimes money dictates what I do. You know, I didn't do Henry Rough, cause Henry Rough was over three million dollars. We don't have a lot of traffic up and down Henry Rough between Michigan and, uh, Annapolis. I didn't do industrial drive, because you got a marijuana place over there at Semtah. So not a lot of road traffic. And people don't understand that. When I do something for the city of Ince, it has a benefit to a whole, not a select group.
Right.
So I just keep that in mind when I come before you. It might not be what you're looking for, but it's, at the time, when the mayor says, hey, present this, this what I present, and this what we got to work with. And, you know, I just try to do the best we can to uplift this city, cause my goal is to leave this city in a better place than when I got here. And I've been here twenty-nine years.
So, have you been in contact with our lobbyists?
Make sure to get my shirt.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
To see whether or not, well, he can do the C.
Oh, he own it. We sent it to him.
Yeah, we sent it to our lobbyists. That's who I sent it to.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, and he's been pretty proactive with me and Carrie. He's, we've had several phone conversations with him. So he's pursuing some money for us. But like I say, when it comes in, and the mayor decides these are the streets he wanna do, they support us. That's all we ask. And so is there any questions?
Jerome, y'all, y'all be on point.
We try to.
You do, I mean.
We try to.
And I tell everybody, I, I'm, I mean, as long as I've been on council, this is one of the departments I really didn't have to worry about. Cause whatever you do, you bring it to us step by step, so we know what you standing up. So, thank you guys.
We try to.
Y'all see the number? See what I do, I'm just, we get, you say two million, two point one, five. We can't fix shit.
Right.
Right.
So once they get through half.
You can pass everything, or not even everything, but like, right.
And people are like getting tired of the cold patch. And to you, uh, Miss Scott, I'll give you the history on the speed humps. These residents sat in here, and they beat me down.
Right.
And they beat me down for about a month, about these speed humps. And then when I, that's why I'm sitting here, and I can't say what I wanna say, but this is what you asked for. It ain't what I wanted. I never wanted. Cause I knew the problem, and I knew we couldn't sustain them, or keep them up, or maintain them. And then people won't say so here, but they call my office, and my deputy tell you, they call us every day looking for speed humps. What about my street? What about my street?
People want them on every street.
Right.
Not one. They want them on their street.
It was like that when we first got in.
Yeah. Well, we, we, we are looking at a, a alternative that the mayor has, you know, allowed me to look into with these, uh, signage. They tell you to slow down, how fast you go. So we are, like, trying to look for some money to get about twenty of those.
Yeah, they're like three thou- the low end, three thousand.
That's like the last meeting, it was like, he got it, but you can't get better than one year.
And we are looking to see if we don't have to put them back down no more. And when we don't put them down no more, that's it. Don't come back to us and say, put them down. Well, we gonna put them down now. They getting ready to put them down. If, if the state says I don't have to put them down no more, and the mayor says he good with that, then I won't put them down. And don't come in here complaining about people's speed.
And that conversation that she said that we had some over in housing, I drove around, there's two over in Parks Side Estates. It's, it's on Carlisle, our street. I mean, we were signers there for them. And then there was one, like, when you go behind the apartments, a old one that has been there for decades, and they hold parking lots, black tie. Other than that, unless the apartment, she's talking about the Dartmouth Square, cause I drove around, and I said, why am I doing this?
I can't sit here and tell you next year's, the maintenance cost gonna be forty thousand, cause it could go up. Inflation things go up. That's this year. You know, so I can't promise you that. But, like I said, we are, we always looking to find road money. Like, we got the sidewalk money from Simp, Simpco. That's in this budget, in the road fund. So we, we are looking for ways, we always looking. Me, me and Carrie, every Wednesday, that's all we do. We on the computer looking for money. Trying to find money. Trying for money. Trying to keep us in the loop. So we are working hard for you guys, cause I know y'all get a lot of heat. And I try to keep it off of you, as much as I can. But, uh, yeah, most of these expenses are routine, snow removals, snow supplies, and road maintenance. Cold patch, like the mayor say, I spent a hundred thousand dollars in cold patching. You know, but this the whole city. You know, sometimes we patch a, the mayor say, well, you, Cherry Hills is messy. I'll be like, well, we just did it a month ago. We go back and do it again. We do John Daly maybe two or three times, cause they just pop up.
When I was out there that one day, they said, well, we had left.
Oh, yeah.
They might as well just dump it, cause we right at New Birth, and that's how big the hole was outside.
One more thing, Cherry Hills in this budget.
Oh, good.
As long as Wayne County hold up their end, it will go from Ince Road to Gully. It's a joint project with us in Deboh Heights.
Okay.
We don't have to pay as much as Deboh Heights, cause they gotta go to Gully.
But it's still twenty percent.
It's twenty percent match.
They ready to hold up their end?
The county is who we petitioned through the federal aid committee, which we sit on. We petitioned them for that road.
No, I mean, Deboh Heights is ready to hold up their end?
Yeah, yeah. They came to us with this. And I did petition the federal aid for the rest of Ince Road from Michigan Avenue to Cherry Hill. And they're looking at that. They're trying to get that in twenty-seven. So, you know, trying to get them to take care of their roads too. So, um, I, I, I'd just like to thank you guys for working with us. We really appreciate it. And it's how we put it.
Did you get raised?
Oh, who?
Raised.
Come on, Carrie.
You might have made my boss say something.
He can't speak, he still sick.
He said, did you get a raise? Did I get a raise? I don't think you know I'm.
Okay, so now we, where we going? We gotta go to Parks and Rec.
Parks and Rec.
Parks and Rec, and that's it, right?
And the trash.
No wonder, not, not, okay, so.
Only other one we need to go through tonight is Parks and Rec.
Yeah.
So you're not gonna do the trash?
I mean, it's, it's, it's.
It's all contractually.
Thank you, Dan.
Matter of fact, I know they look.
Well, look, thank you.
Just like me, man, I work from eight to whatever, and, and now from five until forever.
She could be off tomorrow.
She'll get up at four in the morning.
You be off tomorrow.
She supersede your authority? She ain't rolling no shit.
We ain't gonna talk about this right now. This is not the time.
I am not Mr. Rolo.
You've been on vacation. What are you talking about?
You can't tell them we should have had a quote for the elevator by next week.
Oh, okay. For the park. Okay, okay. So, as I mentioned, I think Parks and Rec is the only really other fund we, we needed to cover. Uh, we do have a couple other funds, but that's, um, it's just trash. It's the contract. And then we just have some, um, some bond funds, which are just, basically, we're just take, collecting money from property taxes, and it's just passing through those. So those aren't really, those are more just, um, uh, you know, funds for, for producing, making payments and everything. But there's no real activity outside, in, inside of those funds. Do, they wanna, you know, given the interest in Parks and Rec, they wanna go over this briefly with you guys. Um, as you know, they, there is the, um, Parks and Rec millage that they have. One thing to keep in mind, I believe some of these millages are gonna be expiring next year, I believe, or, um, so, at some point, we're gonna need to, uh, discuss, um, you know, what, uh, what the plan is for terms of, um, reapproval of, of, uh, I believe the senior, I believe it's the senior millage and the, uh, Parks and Rec millage, I think is up in twenty-sixth, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, we don't, we, we definitely got to renew. Cause senior millage, now they got the senior wing. We need to maintain that, as well as the parks, you know, the rec center for the Parks and Recs.
But I'll, I'll get, I'll get that information, as I was going, going through some of the details that, uh, that came up. So, you know, as you know, they have the Parks and Rec millage. As I mentioned earlier, we try and have this fund be self-sustaining, just so it's not, uh, any money coming out of the general fund. So we try and operate within the context of this budget. Basically, two sources of revenues. One is the property taxes, and then there, they're building generated revenues, mainly, um, memberships and rentals. So you can see, you know, here, w- we have the projection for the, um, uh, property taxes, and then we have some, some numbers on here for building rentals. Building rentals have been, been going up. Um, you know, we, we're looking at about seventy thousand, uh, seventy-one, seventy-two thousand this year. Projecting another seventy-five thousand for next year. Um, we also have the, um, credit union that's there, that's, um, leasing the, um, facility. So that's additional source of revenue. Um, and then there's memberships and the like. And so, all in all, they, they're projecting about five hundred and forty-five, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars roughly. It's kind of the number that we came up with for them on the revenue side. And so we try to, they have a little bit of fund balance, but we're trying to keep their expenses within that range. Um, so that if there's something that comes up, elevator or something, there are some monies that are available. So generally, professional consultant, I believe. Um, so generally, professional consultant, I believe, is, is that, um, uh, I think that's, that, that's for programming, if I'm not mistaken.
Senior services. That's what they pay, that's what I pay the two of you.
Okay, but that shouldn't be coming out of rent though. That's, this is recreation, that, that would be.
That's why I pay they, we'll, two will be a front.
Okay.
And then they, every quarter, we send.
Oh, for reimbursement and everything, okay, I got you. Um, so we've got, uh, salaries and for purpose of this, we used to break them up between permanent and temporary. Um, we put them all into one category just for presentation purposes, cause we have, um, they're permanent employees, we have full and part-time. Um, so we've got a, two full-time employees and then usually three or so part-time. Uh, so we have a director, a deputy director, um, and then we have our part-time employees, um, that are there. That's gonna be, uh, one of the major costs along with, um, the utilities and, uh, building maintenance. Um, and so we've, uh, you know, tried to project out those costs. Some of that, uh, utilities for this year, we're gonna be digging into that over the next couple of months. Cause some of those costs I don't believe should be in that, uh, in that general ledger category for the rec fund. I think that's artificially high. Um, but we've got, uh, you know, we've got those costs and then we've also included fifty thousand dollars just for capital improvements. So we usually try and put some money in there for things that can be done, floor, paint. Um, it's not so much for repairs, but it's for some, something, you know, kind of a project type of thing that we put in there for capital improvements. Um, and then we, uh, also have the situation with, we transfer out a hundred thousand dollars to the senior commission. Um, as part of, the way that the Parks and Rec millage was originally written, it included some language that kind of alluded to the seniors. And so we annually send a hundred thousand dollars out of the Parks and Rec fund over to the senior, to the commission on aging.
Don't they usually have their own budget that they present us with too?
They do.
Yeah.
How long is the millage, is the millage still going on?
Ten years.
It's ten years?
We, we had to renew my first, um.
So I think it's. So I think it's twenty-six that I believe is expiring.
Okay, it's up to twenty-six?
I believe so, yeah, I believe both, I believe, I believe, uh, the senior millage and the rec millage, I believe are expiring next year.
That's good, cause at least there'll be a lot of people voting, cause of the governor's election.
Okay.
So that's cool.
So we'll be able to levy the taxes next year for FY twenty-six, twenty-seven. And then if we put it on the ballot in November, cause the election is November twenty-sixth.
Yeah, November.
So we could put it on the ballot in twenty-sixth.
Does the library mention the same year or is that a different year?
Same, oh.
What's that?
Is the library the same year?
I wanna say library came not to.
We just renewed that. Was it last year or something? When last time we renewed that?
I was, I remember them at the, yeah, cause when I voted, I remember them handing me a pamphlet. But I felt like I had worked the polls that day, that's why I asked.
I don't remember that.
That's like before we got in, so I didn't vote, I don't think I voted in the last.
Okay.
Well, we did have it, we got, uh, we had a president with us. We're in the last year.
Yeah, that was, that's when I.
That should've been twenty. Yeah, it did.
That sounds right, yeah, cause I, I remember when they did the, uh, library, so that may have been nineteen, twenty.
I just feel like it was during COVID, though, cause my dad was out there with me.
Maybe it was nineteen.
That would've been an election year for us then, yeah, nineteen, that sound about right.
It was, cause what's your name ran for the board in your neighborhood? Remember?
Uh.
During my la- uh, no, I last election in twenty-three. Like, something was. All those library board members.
That was the commission.
Yeah, so nineteen was the, was the millage there.
Okay.
So was that a ten-year millage too?
I don't remember what the library is.
I'll, I'll, I'll take a look and see.
I was just wondering, I'm like, if we have three under, we gonna have a.
Yeah, I, I don't think library, I, I, I thought I saw two that were expiring in twenty-sixth.
Those two are together for sure.
Okay.
We also got a call la- last week from Kinesic. He got, he has eighty-one thousand fours for Parks and Rec.
Oh, that's good.
Every three years, we get our, the whole allotment. So it rotates from the three communities.
It was three years the last time we got it? The eighty-five or whatever?
Either that, he's saying somebody didn't use theirs and we're getting eighty-one this year, so.
Oh, okay, that's good.
Um, so. So we just gotta explain what we're using it for, what project, whatever we're doing, write a narrative.
That won't be hard to do. Nah.
Darren, I'm, if you finish, are you finished?
I, I just wanted to point out, so the, the bottom line is we got, um.
That's your question, will you be finished?
Yeah, we've got five hundred and forty-five thousand in revenues that we're projecting and about five hundred and sixty-two thousand in expenses. So a little bit more on the expense side, but they do have some, um, uh, fund balance. And then, you know, some of these monies are not committed, like fifty thousand is not necessarily committed, it's, it's just a, um, you know, item that we would like to have to do some, some, you know, capital improvements.
We, we're gonna have to replace the elevator, so that, that's coming for sure.
That, that can be that project.
The eighty-one is for this year.
Hmm?
Eighty-one is for this year?
Yeah.
Okay.
What was your question?
We might use it for elevators.
I know, uh, on the revenue, on the Tifa. Okay, it's, it's negative thirty. So I know my district's proud of it, it's Tifa. So even though the property taxes may have went down in the past, but don't they still pay more than a person that's not living in Tifa District? They still pay? Cause that was the Tifa District, so they paid a little bit more than the people who was not in the Tifa District. Am I correct in that?
Yeah, so, so the, the Tifa is a, part of the Tifa is a capture. So you shouldn't be paying, necessarily paying more, it's just like the taxes that you're paying, the Tifa, if you live in the Tifa District, the Tifa can capture some of those funds. They can basically take some of those property taxes. Normally, the property taxes are gonna come to the city or come to the, uh, rec center, but they can capture whoever, the, the folks who are in the, the residents and business who are in the Tifa District, part of their millage is captured to go back to the Tifa. And basically, it's paying, it's paying the bonds, it's not do, it's not, you know, going anything but to pay the bonds.
Okay, so after, so this is in a negative thirty, after we pay this, you said it should be off, what, next year, two years or not?
Yeah, but they, they still would, there still would be a capture.
Right, but it wouldn't be in the negative though.
Wouldn't, the negative is because the Parks and Rec is losing their millage.
Okay.
That's because, you know, normally they would get, they would get all the, the millage, but because there's, we have a Tifa, part of that money that they normally would get is, is redirected to the Tifa. So it's a negative, this is looking at it from the Parks and Rec's perspective.
Okay, okay. All right, got you, cause I, I mean, I've been seeing that, I mean, it's all the time with the grounds field.
Mm-hmm.
It's like we never end it.
Yeah, it's just, and it's, it's all just going to death service.
Okay.
Just paying bonds.
We all done? Thank you, Darren, that was good.
Okay, y'all, we, uh, we gotta pick, I assume we're not ready to vote tonight, uh, if we're not, I mean, I don't, I don't know what's gonna change between night and Monday, but, um, if, does anybody have any major issues with what we went over? We can vote tonight and be done with it.
Well, thank you.
And, um, we did have public hearings, did we call the, we did call the public, okay.
So we, we would need a mo- right now, this motion was to discuss, I believe.
It was.
Yeah, we had a public hearing, but nobody was here.
It's funky.
Now that was noted.
It was noticed though.
So that's, uh, that's, uh, regular.
I mean, the only person wanna be complaining, be playing well. We can always amend it. If somebody comes and said, damn it, I don't want you to spend that twenty dollars on, I mean, if it's some legit.
It's not gonna be that many unless you're affecting their pockets.
Yeah.
Like their water rate.
Your laws are not violated, because we didn't post it on the website prior to tonight.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, and that's the only time they talk is when the water rate is high.
The notice, the notice of public hearing was properly noted.
Right.
But they didn't get a chance to review it.
Yes.
Cause we just got it tonight, so we, we just don't, we don't, I, I don't.
Can we just, for that part, can we just scan it in tonight or in the morning? And get on the website and then, and have a copy on file at the Kirk's office for what we went over and that way, if they do.
Yeah, we al- we always put it, we always put it on file. Um, so, you know, we can, all we would need to do is just, cause we have to, if there are any changes, there are a couple of corrections, I'll put those into the approve, the proposed approved budget. And, um, that can, you know, that's what can be voted on, um, and.
It's just a timing thing.
Yeah.
So I don't wanna wait, now, we're talking about two more weeks for our next meeting, unless we have a special meeting next month. So I mean, we're already a month late.
Yeah.
So I, I don't wanna, you know, we already look.
So I mean, at this point, it's just, if, if there is a special meeting, it would just simply be five minutes to do a vote.
Vote, do the vote.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm in town, it doesn't matter to me. I just don't, I just don't wanna do anything improper.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, let's, 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 um.
If I'm available to come back, like, a day or two days from now, we just make sure we, we proper, we good and just have another quick special meeting.
Okay.
Well, I'm gonna be absent, so.
We just need a, need a quorum.
Long as we got a quorum.
And eight, was it eighteen hours, uh, to notice it?
When is it gonna be, Monday, next Monday or?
Well, I mean, tomorrow on Thursday and Friday.
Monday is the thirtieth.
Yeah.
Monday's the thirtieth.
Yep.
If it's gonna be before Monday, then I'll be tiptoeing. So we could do Thursday at five, as long as we out of here.
Okay, I can do Thursday.
I can do Thursday at five.
Good day, this is a Thursday.
Thursday, just.
That's at six.
Yeah, that, yeah, that's what, so, we do five, vote, we can be out of here. Jenita can post it tonight, tomorrow. Jenita can post it tomorrow, as long as it's only, you know, in the morning.
Eighteen hours, we'll get it up.
Okay, Thursday at five.
Thursday at five?
Thursday at five.
Okay, next meeting will be special meeting Thursday at five, we have motion to adjourn.
Some more support.
We mess up, oh, hope participation. Mr. Sanders, you have anything you'd like to say?
I was speaking to Count or Mayor Protem Chisholm the other day, um, in light of, um, what happened at the church in Wayne. And I've been telling him for quite some time, several times, that's a danger to have that door open during a council meeting. Someone can come in here and you're dead before you're done. And I'm being honest.
It's gotta be open though.
Well, I, I think you need to renegotiate a situation where you come through the front of the building. It's, they might troll through the building, but it's better than a potential situation that happens. And I'm gonna tell you, the city of Wayne has steel, I don't know what your situation is, and I didn't wanna say this at a regular council meeting, but you guys really need to enact, because, you know, it's church and council people have been shot up in other cities. So I, I really think you guys need to have an, especially up there, there's nowhere to go, but back there, and you're all not gonna squeeze through that by the time someone gets off shots. You really need to think about what we did in Wayne, was we put used flak jackets under the, under the DAS. Um, Wayne, uh, Westline has steel reinforced DAS, so you guys really need to think about that. And you really need to renegotiate having that door open during council meetings.
We gotta figure out that door, cause the door's gotta be open.
I actually kind of.
As long as there's a way in through the front door.
I think he makes a valid point, cause there's been times that people have like, you just like, you know what I mean? And it's the first thing, you're, my back is here, so that I'm kinda like.
Right.